We've got a speaker system and we're also doing a recording of the meeting. Uh, this will be available on the Gates County website. Uh, tomorrow, I believe, is the, the next day after the meeting or that afternoon after the meeting, so everybody in the county that wants to look at what happened at the meeting will be able to get to it and look at it. Uh, it'll be a complete meeting except for any, um, closed session that will be recorded and allowed only on the Gates County website. So, uh, we put a little note out there so everybody knows it's being recorded. The audience will be recorded and also the commissioners and it'll be on the podium here. So, welcome to Gates County as we move forward into a new, new, new system. Uh, next thing we'll do, we'll start off with a pla- a prayer with Ms. Tracy Clayton. Is she here?
Yep.
And, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Greetings God, as we have been awakened to this new day, we give you thanks, we ask that you guide us. We ask that you guide these servant leaders who are before us. Lord, we, we pray that all of us would, um, be bearers of the fruit of your Spirit, remind us especially of love, kindness, patience, and self-control. As we have gathered here, let us keep before us the, the good of our residents, that we would seek to do your will and be on the ways of justice and peace. In these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. The first one is, uh, anyone who needs any assistance from FEMA for after the storm of last week, there's a form here to tell you everything you need to know. Just pick one up, we're gonna leave it right up here on the front. So, anybody that needs any assistance from FEMA, there's a form here. Next, I'd like, uh, everybody to remember one thing. We're going into, this, this weekend will be remembrance of the nine-one-one, uh, disaster in New York City. I'd like everybody to keep the people that were devastated and in their minds for the, for this week. Uh, there'll be a lot of, uh, emotions going on through, throughout the country after what happened ten years ago, uh, on Sunday, I believe is the date. All right, the next one there, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We've got a few changes we need to make. Um, let's see, under Department Reports, we're gonna add a D, which will be Patrice Laster will have a, um, surplus vehicle from Gitz that she wants to talk about. Under Old Business, um, we're adding a B, which will be Ken Jernigan has asked to be on that. A C, Gus Simmons will be here to, uh, give us an update on the sewer. And Mike Scott is gonna be on at one, but he's asked to be, he won't be able to be here until eleven-thirty, so we may move around to let him when he gets here. Uh, move it around so he'll be able to get here from another meeting he's got to meet this morning. Also, on New Business, we're going to move, we're gonna allow George Bright to be moved up after citizens' comments so he can get out of here. Any other questions? If not, uh, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. A motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right. The next one on the agenda will be approval of the minutes. Uh, you have a copy of the minutes, uh, at front of you, uh, there was an added set of minutes from the July fifteenth, is that right? Twenty-fifth meeting, which was a spec- a special meeting that we called, there's a copy of them, plus there was a page that was missing, and I believe she had, she adjusted that and made a copy and put it at your, uh, your place. Also, she emailed us a copy, so you have it before the meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes that need to be reflected?
Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, if we made to approve the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, minutes have been approved. Uh, next on our agenda, we're going to our citizens' comments. Do we have any signing up? All right, the first one on the list is, uh, Ms. Esther Laster.
Good morning.
You might want to step back a little bit.
I'm not as tall as everyone else. Uh, to the county commis- uh, Board of, uh, Commissioners, uh, to our county manager, to the citizens of Gates County, and our invited guests, and those who volunteered to come in. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have great news from the Gates Partners for Health, and we're always excited to share with you good news. One of them, our farmer's market is continuing, and we have some exciting things planned for the fall season. For September seventeenth and September twenty-fourth, we have a back-to-school special. So, we're honoring all of those employees of the Gates County School System with a ten percent discount. So, we're inviting all of them to come out and see what the farmer's market is all about. In October, we have special theme days. We're starting out celebrating fall on the first Saturday in October. Then on October the fifteenth, we have apples and peanuts. A special day with everything focused around those two products. So, we'll have apple activities, uh, we'll have apple recipes, apple products, uh, we'll have peanuts, peanut products, peanut recipes, anything you want to know about those two items, plus our normal fresh produce and other items. On October the twenty-ninth, we will have Pumpkin Day, so we want you to come out and be excited about this day with us at the farmer's market. We'll be carving pumpkins, uh, we'll have pumpkin pies, uh, other recipes of pumpkins. We'll have children who are coming in dressed, uh, for the occasion, elementary level only, because some of us think we're still children at age sixty. So, elementary level only, we're inviting them to dress in their special costumes, and we will have goodie bags for them. And we carry over, over into November with part two of Pumpkin Day. And on November the nineteenth, we have other exciting things, uh, for you, because that will be our closing day for the farmer's market for the season. So, we invite you to continue to participate in our farmer's market. Remember, we're encouraging you to spend your local dollars local, because this is helping our community and helping the farmers. My other exciting good news for you is that we will be having our fifth annual Family Fun and Fitness Day. It is scheduled for September twenty-fourth, starting at nine AM, and we're extending it until five PM this year. So, we're really excited about this, and we have a list of activities for both the children and adults. We have a special guest this year coming with us, and that's the North Carolina Farm Bureau. And if any of you go on their website, uh, check out HealthyLivingForALifetime.com, and they have a fifty-foot unit that they are bringing to Gates County for the first time, and that unit does all the screenings for us. It would even include bone density screening. So, we're inviting you to come out and be a part of that. It starts at nine, and those who get there first, you'll have a little treat, because they're giving away free tickets for lunch. So, you need to come early to be a part of that. And I have a long list of activities that we will be engaged in for the day, and I'll leave these up here for the community to take one, and I'll leave some for the commissioners also. As part of that day, we will have our second annual Healthy Grill Off. So, if you have a grill and you have a special recipe, we invite you to be a participant in that particular event. First prize is one hundred dollars. So, we invite you to come out, heat up your grill, give us your special recipe, the judging will take place, and we will see who the winner will be. So, we're asking you to please come out. This is free, no charge for parking, we have free popcorn, we have lots of free games and activities for the children, lots of, uh, educational booths will be available, we have educational sessions. So, please come out. The day is going to be filled with health education and fun, healthy activities for the family. So, please be a part. And one last thing, we're having our first Fun and Fit Annapolis Five Hundred. It's a competition between three sets of children, one set from each of the elementary schools. So, we want you to come out and be a witness to that particular event. It's going to be fun and a lot of activities all day long.
You gonna let them drive cars?
No, they're using what God gave them, their feet. But it's going to be an exciting, uh, competition. We're working with the Cooperative Extension Service in getting this event going, and we are so excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Earl, we'll have to get us some possums and do a grilling on possums that day.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Try to stick with healthy.
Possum's healthy. They just don't know how to get across the road, that's the problem. All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Esther, and I'd like to, to, to commend, uh, Ms. Esther and the, uh, the farmer's market. I've, I've been part of the farmer's market, and, uh, and it's been very successful, and we'd like to invite everybody to come out there and, uh, take part of our farmer's market out there. There's, uh, we've had a mid seventy-five to a hundred people out there on Saturday mornings before twelve o'clock. I haven't been part of the twel- the, the Wednesday meet, market, but I have been on every Saturday, so everybody's welcome. Uh, next on my agenda, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I ran my mouth again. Uh, Wade, Wade Askew? Good morning, Wade.
Commissioners and manager and citizens of Gates County. I'm Wade Askew from Yore.
There you go.
In the forming of our country several years ago, our, um, forefathers had several obstacles in front of them. They had the British, the Spanish, the French, and of course, the Indians. And they found it very necessary to have a good, um, uh, field of secrecy to operate within. And at that form of secrecy and security is even in practice today in our government in Washington DC, in the military, and here in local government, which is called, um, closed session. And the other week, I was reading an article in a newspaper, and I believe that if the Board of Commissioners sent out a certain letter, I believe they felt like there was a need to do so. And I'm not pointing any fingers or saying anything, but if there has been a breach of, uh, security or secrecy within the county, then maybe that person should be held accountable. But I'm not pointing any fingers or anything. And the next thing I would like to say is that in the early nineteen-sixties, John F. Kennedy, which was our president, he didn't send a letter act or a survey act to the citizens to ask, do they want to go to, uh, China, California, or to the moon? President Kennedy said, "We're going to the moon," and by golly, we went to the moon. That was called leadership. I believe in getting all the information from the citizens as we possibly can, but when you sit behind that table, you should already know what the citizens of the county need, and that is leadership. If we have to send out surveys and hide behind the citizens of the county, we're, we're not really doing the job as leaders of this county that we should be. And when President Kennedy went to the moon, took our country to the moon, he opened up many doors. Many of us in here today, we travel, and when we do, we use DSL. Without that trip to the moon, that wouldn't be possible. Even today, as we sit here, we have satellites that watch over us twenty-four hours a day, and the list goes on and on. We even have satellite television, but without that trip to the moon, that wouldn't be possible. So, what I'm trying to say is, we can close the door on a library, but we're just closing the door on our many possibilities for the future. Who knows? There may be a kid that's unborn today that may find a cure of cancer right here in Gates County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Wade. Okay, next on the agenda, Ann?
Good morning. Um, a couple weeks ago, there was a article where it was from, the words from the web that came out, came out in the Herald, and I know Cal's been busy with the paper, that he said it stays swamped and he hadn't had a chance to get it in the Gates County paper yet. So, I just wanted to make sure that y'all hear about it, uh, if it, you know, I know Cal stays backed up, but it will get over there one day. This was in there, it said, "Mr. Hor's database will only be collecting information on and who, when books get checked out. If that is what Mr. Hor thinks the library does, then it is time for Mr. Hor needs to renew his library card and look at the services that the library produces. As far as Mr. Hor's statement about the funding base, on whether the program is revenue-bearing part of our local government, the worth of some things cannot be judged based on whether it produces a monetary value. What is the next on your hit list, Mr. Hor? Schools, civic leagues, public gatherings, churches? How can you place a monetary value on education?" And this was posted by Wright, response to the news, Herald, and Story, uh, Library Database forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joe?
My name is Joe Green, I'm from Yore. I'm a little confused. Um, been getting emails, been getting, uh, reading things in the paper about, uh, commissioners not treating our citizens fairly, and not being given the right to speak, uh, and not being recognized. Um, kind of very, found it very confusing, because when I walked in, I signed the paper. I'm up here. So, I, I see no problem with what's going on, you know? And I understand that one of the responsibilities of the chairman is to have control and order. You have to have that in a meeting. You can make fun of it, you want to, uh, but we have a business to conduct, and, and when everybody starts breaking in, you can't do the business. So, you know, if you want to talk, sign this thing, just sign, that's all you got to do. And far as the commissioners being disrespectful to the citizens, it might be some of the citizens are disrespectful to our commissioners. I was very disappointed when I went home last, after the last, uh, meeting, I found out that our library had been tabled. I think the statement was by Mr. Hor, he would not support one point seven million dollars. Are our citizens not worth it? Do we not deserve a library? Because we're not getting a monetary kickback, or we're not getting anything back? I think part of responsibility of our commissioners is to provide certain ser- services to us, education, maybe safety and welfare. Education being the library, welfare, is to get out there and get businesses in for jobs. The safety part of it, there's not a commissioner up there that can tell me that library is safe for Pat Thamelar, her employees, or our citizens to be in on a daily basis. If something happens in that library, the one point seven million dollars for that library is gonna be mine. But I haven't heard any comments about Mr. Hor from this little group of people that is against the commissioners. Wonder why? You know, is it, is it fine? So, I'm gonna close with one statement. I worked with Ray Felton for fifteen years, I was service manager. When I first got that job, oh, excuse me, I've got sinus, so I bet I can't speak. I was getting heckled and picked on like you are, Graham. I went to him, what am I doing wrong? He said, "Joe, when you do your job, everybody's on you. When you're not doing your job, nobody says anything. Graham, you're doing a good job, keep it up." Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jonathan Jones?
Morning. Good morning. Good morning. Um, I'm here today representing the chamber. As Esther said, um, her many events, there are things to do in the county. A lot of folks say there's nothing to do in Gates County, um, but there are things to do. Um, Esther's group is a, is a good example of that. Um, another good example, I want to come today and personally invite you, Ms. Chairman, the rest, rest of the commissioners. The chamber is sponsoring two big events next week. Two big motivational speakers are coming to our county to speak to our chamber and other folks that are interested. Um, on Monday, we have Creating a Leader's Voice by Greg Pyburn. Um, he is going to talk about skills and tools to make an effect, there are many skills and tools an effective leader has in her, his or her toolbox. Um, it's going to help managers and supervisors become far more effective communicators. Um, that is on Monday. It's a lunch event that we are having. It's lu- it's called a Lunch and Learn with them. On Tuesday evening, we have John Formica, who is an ex-Disney guy, coming to speak to us. Um, he talked, he is going to talk about making the workplace magical, creating a positive whistle while you work, atmosphere in your organization. Um, I know that at the State Employees Credit Union, we go to different, there's different workshops and stuff. Um, I actually haven't had a chance to talk to Toby about, maybe there's something that I want to personally invite you, the commissioners, but also maybe something that department heads. Um, it's, it's a small fee, basically to cover the amount of food, the, the food for us. Um, the chamber is covering the speakers. Um, Greg Pyburn is coming in from Colorado, and John Formica is coming from out western, in the western part of the state. Um, something that we're not typically used to in Gates County. These are, these are big speakers. Um, if you Google them on the internet, you'll see a lot of information about them. Um, but again, come, come get dinner with us on Tuesday night, come get lunch with us on Monday. Um, if you're not happy, if you don't learn anything, I'll refund you your money back. But I've got a flower for each of you.
Thank you, Don.
Jonathan, is that open to general public, anybody that wants to attend?
If, if someone in the general public, there is a fee, we're not a chamber member, um, if anybody's interested, check out our left side of the call log, that's right, we have to give you the information, whether we have the registration in by Friday. Um, it is required, chamber members, as a benefit of being a chamber member, however for, if, if a citizen wanted to, um, if there is a, there is a fee associated with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next, Earl, you're the next one on the list.
Hello, my name is Earl Ranstry from Sunbury, North Carolina. Graham, commissioners, thank God we finally got this. I've been wanting it a long time. Took us a while to get it. I keep noticing, who, is that our county manager?
Yeah.
Last time I saw he, I saw him, I couldn't recognize him. Well, you've got his glasses on. Okay. Um, one thing you're gonna, I would, you know, this is new to you, whoever may be chairman, but if you go to these places, like I stood up here and said my name, uh, because I've done this several times, and most everybody's done that today, but as chairman, be sure that people state their name, and you go in and, and you go to Passaport Tank, you know, it's sort of like the nukes, uh, the suit Nazi, you know, you walk up to the, you know, and if you don't state your name, you don't talk. I, uh, what I, the two things, one, before I even get into this, I'll just throw this out to you if you don't know this. Uh, the North Carolina Attorney General, uh, Sunday, uh, Monday, I don't know which, why it would be on a Sunday or Monday, uh, sent our redistricting plan for the state of North Carolina to the Justice Department. And so, uh, we don't know what, of course, they got sixty days, uh, in Washington and the Justice Department to say, "We accept it, reject it, uh, send it back." Uh, but it has been, and I'm assuming by now that everyone knows what district they're in, in all the districts. Uh, I don't get too many comments in Gates County, Passaport Tank, McQuillan's, people stop me in McDonald's when I'm trying to eat my sausage and ask me about it. Uh, but, uh, the, the kind of interesting thing to me was the fact that I've been friends with Waldo Jones for going on forty years, and, uh, I'm still not in his district. Uh, he called me up and said, "Are you in my district yet?" And I said, "No, I got to walk across the road." But I came up here, I was gonna mention the library, and I did have, I was gonna make a public statement, my position on the library today. However, I do understand that Mr. Hor, uh, is working on a presentation to the public and to the commissioners, uh, so I was going to forego any statement until I had an opportunity to see what he had to say, because I may make the wrong statement and say, "I wish I hadn't said that." Uh, so I won't take a great deal of time with that. However, having been and read all the minutes, it's not a lot of minutes, we're gonna have new minutes now, I guess, we read and sit down and look at all of it. Um, I think the key here, number one, is I just don't imagine anyone don't see the idea that we need a new library. Uh, I think all you got to do is walk in and cross the road and know that. Uh, my biggest problem in reading the minutes, listening to other people, has been the fact that we have never really determined from a professional standpoint what we really need, and that bothers me. Um, you know, I kind of say that Calipula, for example, uh, some guy, the CEO in Ponor- Port, here, Illinois, says, "What the heck? Let's go down there to Clayton and build a fifty thousand dollar, I mean, a fifty thousand square foot warehouse." Well, sir, what do we need it? Oh, I want it. You know, they don't do things in business that way. And I think the only problem in studying and thinking about this is, the only problem I see is that we haven't jack ever sat down, y'all talked about square footage at a meeting, and it kept, and the, and the price kept going up. But we've never done, and we got about sixty days, we can do it. Uh, someone said that the library was tabled, that wasn't so, they just made a commotion to, uh, to do it within ninety days, right Kenny? It wasn't tabled. But, um, anyway, I'd like to see, and I don't know the answers to this, and I don't, maybe none of us do, so we kind of need a committee, uh, within the next sixty days to decide exactly what size library we need. I don't know, and I don't know if any of you do, y'all can interrupt me if you have any time, if you've got information, Jack, that I don't have, but how many square feet we're using? We know we don't have enough or without, I mean, that's no problem, but we don't even know what we're using, and we haven't really gone in and sat down. I went through all the minutes, and no one has ever suggested having a group of people to sit down and say, "What do we need?" And our close was saying that, um... I don't know if you had something to do with it. I know you can hear me, but I can't hear you. Exactly. That's not fair. But anyway, I was, you know, I think it'd be a good idea if we kind of put together a committee, and I'll just throw this out, I mean, I know nobody ever listens to me, and I'm not too smart. I found that out yesterday, I thought I was smarter than I was, but my seven-year-old grandson, who I taught to play blackjack when he was three and a half, and he took up poker and he drew a straight the other day, and yesterday, he took up chess and he beat me in two games in a row, and he called me up, and he said, "A second grader beat you two games in a row." So, I know I'm not too smart. But I think, you know, this will just be an example, think about it, let's get a committee. Kenny Jernigan is chairman, this was his project, people behind him, we want the library. Uh, Mr. Jordan, two commissioners, put him on it, because there's a lot of comments in here in the minutes that he made. Pat Thamelar, who's a librarian, put her on the committee. I also suggest, I don't know if he would even do it, but the man who's done as much building, uh, built our liquor store in the last, uh, couple of years, a very intelligent individual, George Parker Kitchell, former county commissioner, uh, he would be an asset to it, and maybe put him on, I don't know who the fifth person may be. But let's determine what we need. The public is concerned, concerned that what other people are saying, that one point seven million dollars turn them off, because we started out with about- Because we started out with about a million and people sort of like that. And I think we can build a nice library for a million, million one, we don't need a million seven, but let's determine the need. I'll see y'all later.
Thank you Earl. Okay, that ends our folk comment session. Yes, sir.
I'd like to address, um, Mr. Roundtree's comments.
Okay.
What we have done, um, is we've had, um, the professionals from LSC three. Three P. To come down and meet with the library staff, as well as, um, county manager, and initially myself and Mr. Twine. And, um, we sat back and we went through, I think, probably about a five or six-page document, uh, addressed, um, typical things that you would see in a library. And on each one of those areas, we addressed, uh, what would be a likely amount of square footage that would address, for example, um, a computer area, how much square footage would we believe that we needed there? How many computer terminals? The children's section, what do, what did we believe the square footage would be sufficient for there? Um, I'd say that, uh, Mr. Chapel and Graham and myself, we did have some input, but we had, uh, library staff there that knew far more about library, uh, occupancy and usage than we did. So we did a lot of listening, but we did have s- some input. Um, they took that, uh, that information back and did a rough draft. They brought that back, met with the library staff again. Uh, I don't know if Toby and, and Graham met with them, but I didn't meet the second time. They've gone back and refined that thing after that second visit, so we have had some professional input in that. Um, we gleaned some information from, uh, from the, the engineers, the architects. They've built quite a few libraries, uh, it's one of their expertise, really. So they had, uh, they gave us a lot of information and, and we're their customer. So they have addressed us in that format to, to, to be good listeners. And when we've asked questions about the what ifs, how about if we changed this, uh, you know, what would that entail? So the, um, they took the recommendations or the dialogue from those two meetings, went back and said, well, if you do all of this, your square footage will be, uh, eight thousand one hundred square feet. I'm, I'm real close on that number. So now what we're doing is, we're going to get into a phase sometime in the near future where this thing is bid it out. And then we'll be able to look and say, that's too much money. We don't want to spend that much money. We don't want to spend one point seven. We don't want to even spend one point six. We, we don't, maybe we don't even want to spend one point five. But after we get those bids in, we may see that, hey, we need to drop back to a seventy-five-hundred-foot library and rebid those prices until we get down to something that, uh, we feel comfortable with, but at the same time, something that is worthy of our citizens of Gates County. I appreciate your comments and I didn't want the public or yourself to get away without knowing that we had done some research. So thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, sir.
For some of those comments that have been made on both sides of that is correct. In the very near future, I will be presenting you a presentation on the library and some of the statistical data involved around that and comparable to other ones. But I'd like for each of you to take your August fifteen minutes and I'd like for you to go through them and actually read them. And there's a statement here that says, Commissioner Horr made a motion to go back to the nine hundred thou- nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar plan for the proposed new library. There was no second. The motion did not pass. So I don't want you to be confused about whether I'm for or against the library. We started out, and if you do read, um, the articles that came out in the news herald that Cal wrote back last year, around, uh, March, April, it was a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar plan. That's what was brought on the table. And we have escalated to one point seven million dollars. Now, I'm going to reveal some things on this one point seven million dollars that are very eye-opening. Now, if you want to look at them, you could, and you know, you can judge for yourself what it is. We need a new library, we have to have a plan. But you know, we don't have to keep up with the Joneses. We don't have to have a Cadillac, we can have a Ford and get there. Education is about motivation. Completely about motivation, not resources. If you, as an individual, want an education, there is an opportunity today for you to get that, regardless of where it is. But you have to be a motivated individual. Is a library a part of that? Yes, no doubt about it. Practical learning and critical learning skills are another part of that. So I'm not here to try to debate whether we need a library or not. But it's not about the education part of it, it's about a need, a willingness to sacrifice for a certain amount. So I want you to go to, and I do want you to take these minutes and read them, as what it says. So don't be confused that John Horr is up here trying to shoot a library down, because that's not true. Absolutely not true. But I am a practical businessman and all my life has been involved about capitalization and making a logical and a sound business decision that is justified by the facts that support the decision. And that's what this is all about. That was not done. And we went out and spent seventy-something thou- or committed to seventy-seven thousand dollars and haven't done the front end of the process. We also have some other projects like that right now, too, that are on the table. One of them's going to be talked about today. You don't just go do things without having sound investment practices. If you went down to Jack, would you just tell him to invest your money? Would you ask him for some statistical data on some funds and what the history of those funds are? What would you do? Would you just turn your money over and say, hey, here, go spend it? No, you don't do that. You do your homework, you do your background before you make a decision. And even when you do that, sometimes you make the wrong decision, because I've done that. But I tell you, if you don't do the front-end process, you are ver- the probability of success down the road is very minute, very minute. And if you don't believe it, just look at what's happening to us today. Exactly, all across this nation, those very same things, because we haven't done our homework up front before we make critical decisions that impact everyone. It's your tax dollars and I will not spend your tax dollars unwisely. I will not do that. I didn't do that at International Paper. For thirty-five years, I was entrusted with a company that had plenty of money, deep pockets. But I spent it just like it was mine, because that's what my boss expected of me. And I expect you to scissors and to hold me accountable for those very actions. When I look you in the face, I want you to know that I spent them wisely and I did what was best for the public. So, uh, in the next week or so, I'm waiting on one more document to come back and I thank Mr. Gary Horr for providing some of these, out of these one hundred reports. There are, there's some very, uh, eye-opening numbers in there that need to be paid attention to. And I hope you will be present when they are there. Then you make your own decision of what you think. It's entirely up to you. So, uh, but I appreciate you being here today. This is very critical, but not just the library, we have some other issues in this county that are extremely, uh, critical right now. This is a decision-making process that's going to have a, a real impact on us going forward. We're a disadvantage in Gates County with our tax base. Uh, companies want to come here with our tax base because it's low and it impacts them, because they're going to be your high-dollar taxpayers. They look at those kind of things, at rates and, and, uh, valuations and things like that. So it's important. So anyhow, I just want that to, and if you will, go look at the August fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, next on our agenda, we'll go into our department reports, uh, Sandy Pittman. Okay, I'm sorry, we need to move George, uh, Bright up, because he needs to get out of here. George, thank you.
I appreciate it.
I do. You know, to sit back and to listen to the discussions that have taken place here, you don't want and probably don't need my opinion, but, um, this is the fourteenth out of fifteen counties that I've visited, uh, the Board of Commissioners in the last two weeks, on a purely ceremonial issue, to get a proclamation for Hunger Action Month. Uh, I feel like an expert on county government. What I've seen here today is just amazingly reassuring. It's not true everywhere I've been. But to see this kind of interaction, to see the kind of commitment up on the part of the citizens of Gates County, um, I know you don't, but just take it from a guy down the road who just pulled into town, don't take it for granted. Don't take it for granted. You have something very, very special going on here. And, uh, it doesn't happen every place. Having said that, you didn't want any of that, but there it is, I felt it in my heart and so I'm laying it out on the table to you. I'm here representing the Food Bank of the Albemarle, I'm George Bright, the Resource Development Associate there. I've been on the job a whopping six months. I served on the Board of Directors of the Food Bank of the Albemarle for quite some time. And they created a new position in March of this year and gave it to me and it's been truly life-changing. I thought I knew a lot about the food bank, the fact that it serves northeast, northeastern North Carolina, the fifteen counties across northeastern North Carolina, the fact that we have a hundred and thirty-four agencies in those fifteen counties through which we distribute food. I knew all the facts, knew all the figures. I know that in the last twelve months, the Food Bank of the Albemarle in those fifteen counties has distributed four million six hundred thousand pounds of food. Uh, about two hundred thousand pounds, a little less, uh, two hundred thousand pounds of that food came right here to Gates County. We have four agencies here, we have a mobile food pantry that visits here. I knew all the statistical information, but until I got on the job and then all of a sudden, I thought I understood everything, and then we had a visitor by the name of Irene. And I got to see how the food bank operates, not just on a day-to-day basis, addressing the fact that one in four people in northeastern North Carolina is most likely hungry, as compared to one in six nationally. I knew all about what the food bank was doing to address the fact that northeastern North Carolina is the second hungriest part of the United States. Second only to the Bronx section of New York City. Northeastern North Carolina has the second most serious problem with issues of hunger. I knew all of that. I knew how we operated on a day-to-day basis. And then along came Irene. And I saw the food bank in action. I saw them taking every dollar that's donated to the food bank and turning that into five pounds of food. Turning those five pounds of food into four meals. It is, it's just an absolutely amazing thing. I'm new enough there that I can still be amazed by it all. The reason that I'm here today is to ask you to do what Governor Perdulik did last week. On September first, Governor Perdulik proclaimed September as Hunger Action Month. It's purely a formality. The proclamation is no more than a PR gimmick. But what it does is it gives me the ammunition when I go out and speak to the public and ask people to give that one dollar that'll become four meals. I get to say that the, all fifteen counties in northeastern North Carolina, North Carolina, you sound losing my voice. All fifteen counties in North Carolina, northeastern North Carolina cared enough to name it Hunger Action Month. It's a year-long process, but your participation and your endorsement during this one time is going to mean a lot to the opportunities that I have to get out and ask for those dollars. So that's what I'm asking you to do today, to vote to proclaim September as Hunger Action Month in Gates County. I promise you will work hard, not a wasted dollar, not a wasted moment. And our, uh, success in the week and a half since Irene, uh, speaks well to that. That's what I'm here for.
Uh, gentlemen, we, I have a proclamation here, uh, I need a motion to, uh, deliver this proclamation. I was motion in a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. We've got, hold on, hold on a minute. Mr. Bright, hold, hold on a minute. I'm going to read the proclamation.
Oh, good for you.
Uh, this is a proclamation for Hunger Action Month Thirty Ways and Thirty Days, September two thousand and eleven. Whereas Feeding America is nation's leading domestic hunger relief organization, with a mission to feed and advocate for America's hunger through the nationwide network of members of food banks. And whereas the Food Bank of Albemarle is a member of Feeding America and fights hunger and poverty in fifteen northeast North Carolina counties by partnering with more than a hundred and thirty local agencies to distribute food for, to the hungry. And whereas both the Food Bank and the Albemarle and Feeding America seek to engage our citizens locally, statewide and nationally in the fight to end hunger. And whereas the number of people in the Albemarle area who need assistance is increasing, as reflected in more households in poverty and more individuals being unemployed. And whereas the fight against hunger is a fight that concerns each of us. And whereas the contribution of our time, talent, treasure moves us even clo- ever closer to the answers in issues of hunger and poverty in our communities. And whereas the citizens of Gates County can visit the Food Bank of the Albemarle website, www.afoodbank.org, for ideas and ways to make difference for local emergency feeding programs with, for the food bank, especially for our hungry and needy during the thirty days of opportunities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Graham, to L. Twine, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Gates County, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and eleven as Hunger Action Month with the theme of Thirty Ways and Thirty Days in Gates County. And this is adopted on the seventh day of September two thousand and eleven.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And do take the time to visit the website, afoodbank.org, by, thank you very much. By entering your zip code, uh, at the website, you can, uh, our website is designed so by entering your zip code, you can see what the nearest resources are if you need help. And then also, on another section of the website, by entering your zip code, you go directly to what's called a Thirty Ways and Thirty Days calendar that lets you know that beyond your money, there are a lot of other things that you can do to make a difference in Gates County. So, uh, I appreciate this very, very much and I'll pass it on to everyone at the food bank.
Thank you, Mr. Bright, and all the work you do. Colleen, I understand you need to make a statement?
Just as a, as a matter of public information, some of the organizations that are funded by the Food Bank of the Albemarle are, are present today. Gems is, is one agency that partners. Uh, we have a mobile food pantry that comes to Gates County once a month. Uh, several churches, um, and organizations, I, I can't name them all, I believe Damascus Grove, Ballard Grove.
In, in Gates County, it's Ballard Grove Baptist Church and Soup Kitchen, Damascus Road Worship Center, Gates Emergency Ministries and Upper Room Assembly, plus we have the Mobile Food Bank.
But they're working very hard to be gate county residents and we appreciate their partnership with the partner.
Absolutely, if you're one of, with one of those member agencies, why don't you stand up so that we can know that you're here? Folks, they are, you see, I'm so new, they don't know me yet, not when I'm here. Well, thank you for all you're doing.
We really appreciate everything y'all do for us. Thank you, sir. We really appreciate the, the work that y'all do. Miss Annie, I, I talk to you a lot and G- uh, Gems and anybody, uh, those of us at the food, uh, the farmers market, if we have anything left over, we try to get it to Gems that afternoon if possible. Alright, next on our agenda, we're going to go into our department reports. Um, first one, Miss Sandy Pittman, she has some budget amendments for us.
Good morning.
Good morning Sandy.
Got a few things, I've got amendments and a couple of other things today that I don't normally have, but we'll get through the amendments first and we'll look at the other things. It's kind of in the way. Can you hear me now? Better?
Can you hear me now or stop?
Okay, the amendments that we have, we have six through eleven. Uh, number six is to correct the carryover budget for the divorce filing fee grant. When we do our budgets back in June, we estimate the carryforward number for some of these grants and we have to correct them once we get into the fiscal year and have good numbers for the previous year. So that's what that one is. Number seven is the same thing for the REA STEM grant that we received last year. Number eight is to carry forward the budget for the contract for LS three P. We spent all but thirty-five thousand or so of that money and we had to carry forward that budget. We also have a grant writing con- We also have a grant writing contract for ten thousand five hundred. Number nine is to carry forward that budget. And number ten is to carry forward the additional sixty thousand or so for the wastewater engineering contract. That one is split between the general fund and water fund, that's why there's so many additional lines on that one. Number eleven is also correcting a carryforward number for our new choices grant. And that's it. They're all pretty straightforward this month. Any questions?
I have one question on number eleven.
Yes, sir.
And I see childcare down there at the bottom, and I was just curious if that was a new program? Do you know?
That's a new line. We actually opted to leave that money in the tuition and books. This grant allows us to pay for the tuition books and also childcare. If there's a participant while they're going to school, the grant also pays their childcare costs, and we had had that in the tuition and books line, and we opted to leave it in there. That's why there's no account number there, to keep it consistent with the way we've been doing it.
Sandy, number six and number eleven.
Yes, sir.
Six balances, eleven does not. And would you come get these? I got something here I want you to look at with those negative numbers, and I really wouldn't put negative numbers in there, but I think something like that would make it a lot clearer to the layman that is not familiar with what's going on, so that you have the balancing column in the left-hand side and the total, so that you can see that it's zero balances.
Okay. If you want me to, I'll go back and restructure this form, and I'll see y'all.
That's just a suggestion, and I think if you will look at it, that you will see that it will make it a lot clearer.
And I'll go back and double check. I have not.
Number eleven doesn't balance, and of course, and it's not really that it's out of balance, it's just the way that it's presented on the paper.
Well, yeah, and it is, and I thought we had gone back and double-checked it because honestly, she's had to change this one two or three times that she did it, and without a calculator in front of me.
That's right.
If you would, from now on, when this comes up, let me know before the meeting, so I can get it corrected and have it.
Hell, I didn't look at it until last night, and I'm sorry.
Right, but I mean, this morning, I could've fixed it before we came in. Now we're gonna, this grant ends September thirtieth. We need to approve this budget amendment, so I'll go back to my office and come back if it's okay, and get it balanced, and get the numbers corrected, and come back before the end of the meeting, if that's okay.
You don't even have to do that. I just, all I'm saying is making a suggestion, but that form there makes it a lot clearer.
Okay, but if this doesn't balance, you can't approve it, is what I'm saying, and I'll have to go back and find the numbers and make it balanced, and come back before the end of the meeting, so.
Well, the reason it doesn't balance is because the twenty-one oh seven has been added into it. See, if you take the twenty-one oh seven, the revenue, the whole decrease column has been added to the forty-nine eighty-eight, the total.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but I've gotta go back and check the numbers, and I'm good with numbers, but I can't stand up here.
It's in balance, except for that one number, the forty-nine eighty-eight. That's the only number that's wrong.
Well, if the revenue is decreasing, that's why the total is like that. Does it balance at the end of the day? Don't the revenues and expenditures balance each other out with a net zero?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's in balance.
Oh, it's in balance, it's the presentation here that's the problem.
Yeah, okay.
And look at that number eleven that I gave you. See where it totals to the twenty, what is it?
We'll see if we can find a more user-friendly way to do this.
It totals the twenty-eight eighty-one rather than forty-nine eighty-eight.
Right, but the total decreases are forty-nine eighty-eight, that's why it's looked that way on this.
That's correct.
So we'll work together, see if we can get a more user-friendly form that you want.
But number six, number six was done correctly. See, that one doesn't total. See if you got nine.
Actually, at the bottom, it says the thirteen-two fifty-four and thirty-three-seven-nine.
Yeah, but you can look and see nine, two, two, four.
This one's done the same way as the other one, Mr. Bright. They're both done exactly the same.
I understand, but it don't add.
Okay. Let's see if we can get the form corrected someplace besides right now while I'm standing up here.
That's just a suggestion.
They're in balance as far as the revenue expenditure.
That is correct, yes, they are.
So we can move to it.
Yes, that's correct. It's all the presentation.
All right, we've got these budget amendments as presented. Do I have a motion to accept the budget amendments as permitted, presented?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Sandy.
All righty, thank you. The next thing that we have is the form authorizing the drawdown of lottery funds for this year. This is a form that we have to do every year. The school board has approved it and signed it, and this is really a formality that you all need to, I guess, discuss it and approve it.
Are there any discussions on this application to draw down the lottery funds? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept it.
So move.
Let me ask one question. Now, is this, this is accumulation in the fund of lottery funds over several years? Is that correct?
No.
This is, what period of time?
Quarterly, the money is put into the account, and we can draw it down quarterly. The six eighteen seven thirty-five is our total debt payment this year for the last school loan that we took out, that we're using lottery funds to pay for. This is not what we will receive. We will receive whatever. It's, I believe we budgeted one-twenty-five or something, but by putting the whole amount on here, it allows us to pull down everything up to that amount.
Right.
All got a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Next, we have the cash management policy. This was emailed to everyone last month. We've worked, the committee and I have worked together to get this the way that we want it to be. I have not heard anything back from anybody to make any changes. I assume that everybody is happy with it the way that it is. Time to speak.
Sandy, I've looked it over, and I like the way it's presented. I see that some of the comments were incorporated that I made earlier, but I think that the, what we're requiring each department to do as far as how they handle funds, that there should be a statement in there that says that each department head or supervisor will require their employee or subordinate to sign for having read this document. In other words, it's, you know, there's a step-by-step procedure that each employee has to go by, and there's personnel consequences if they don't go by this. So we want to make sure that each employee has documented, I have read the policy, and somehow signed for it, so that if something comes up, you know, they can't say, well, yeah, I got it, but I didn't read it, I wasn't aware of that, or whatever.
Like we did the travel policy.
Certainly, certainly.
Just making a statement in there at the end, that each employee will be required to read and sign off on it.
Yeah, and we can add a signature page, like with the travel policy, we have them sign the signature page, and we include it in the personnel folder.
Yeah.
So we can do the same thing with this, I'm good with that.
And Sandy, on attachment A, which, I apologize, because I know you did ask to do this, which, where it's talking about the tax and water departments, and there's nothing wrong with the way it's written.
Tell me where you are.
On attachment A, right here under all departments other than the tax and water departments.
Yes.
Where it says employee receives, and because we're talking about two, and we don't have job titles, we say employee number one and employee number two, so there's a distinct distinction between those, which the wording is fine, I mean.
This is for all departments other than tax and water.
Right, so what, all you're doing is saying two different people, and it reads like that. But if you just say employee number one receives, employee number two deposits, something like that.
I can do that.
Should we have title there?
Well, if you know them, but that's the reason that, the problem, because different people doing, all you want to do is signify that there are two individual people that are doing this, not one. And even though it reads, I mean, you can follow that, but if you put one and two, there's absolutely no confusion whatsoever, that there are two different individuals.
I can do that.
Good idea.
Do you want to do that and bring it back? What is yours?
It's fine, just like it is, but I think we add that and put one and two.
Add the one and two, and then add the signature page requiring all employees to sign it. And if y'all are okay with that, we can do that.
There's no need to take and go, balance this thing back and forth.
Okay.
Good job, Sandy.
You want me to come back, there's a motion, Johnny, that we accept?
I make a motion, we accept the cash management as presented.
With the notice.
With noted changes.
I'll second that.
Our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like for everybody to realize the second page where it says, all departments and all employees will adhere to this policy, because there's some that are general funds, some that are enterprise, some that are elected. I just want to make sure the board and the departments are aware that this is all departments.
Okay.
When we get the signature page, we'll make sure that it goes out to all departments. Okay.
All right.
Okay. My final piece of business today, I hope, is the return check policy that we also sent out to you all last month. The return check policy that's in place now basically states that we charge the fees that are authorized in the general statutes. Each department handles their own return checks individually. Everybody has their own policies, if they receive more than one return check, how they handle that. We'd like to get this together into one policy for all departments. Basically, what this states is that if you return, if you have two return checks within a year, that we're going to stop accepting checks from you for a year, and after that, after that year period, you return another check, we'll no longer accept checks. The issue that we have now is if we have somebody that writes two return checks to the water department, and then a third one to the tax department, there's no policy that puts those together, or even it's just one to water, one to tax. So this will be tracked by the finance office, the return checks, and then we will do that. They'll still handle sending out the notifications and such, but then this will allow us to keep track and make the determination if they've had multiple return checks in different departments, then we can set a policy in place.
Do you actually post that in each department's name?
We will. At this time, we don't, the return checks are returned to the departments. We keep track in our office of them, obviously, but each department handles it individually now. We'd like to really kind of centralize this.
It makes sense to me to have it centralized.
Good idea.
Okay, y'all read this policy? Are there any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the policies presented.
I make a motion that we accept the return check policy as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay?
All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, next on our agenda will be Ms. Renee McGuinness, our tax administrator, with her reports.
Good morning.
Good morning, Renee.
Slide this over to the side a little bit. The collector's report that you have, you were emailed one, and I believe you had another one before you this morning, really not much change in the two. The only thing is, in the one that you had this morning, up towards the top of the sheet, you will see a line that's highlighted in yellow that basically gives you the total of the beginning levy discoveries and so forth for both motor vehicles and real and personal property. The only other change that you may notice, the first report that you received, under the change collections column for two thousand and eleven, you had a pretty large negative figure. The reason for that was because we did our annual billing in August, so therefore, we had a significant amount of levy added to the two thousand and eleven, much more than what we took in, which you have been seeing a negative figure there for the last few months, but this upcoming month, you should see a positive figure there, so that really is the only change in the two reports. I also want to call your attention to the, we had a pretty large number in release and refunds. This is mainly release on the real and personal property side. The reason for that is after we calculated our annual bills, we realized some of the properties that had been approved for deferred taxes were actually put in one part of our system, but not the other. So what we had to do was go back and release that amount as to what they should have been, so their bill would have been what it should have been if they had been billed correctly to start with, and we realized that after the bills were calculated. The only other thing that you may note is down towards the bottom, your write-offs due to the original bill being less than two dollars is around double what you're used to seeing. Once again, the reason for that this month is because of the annual bills. And those did go out, I believe, one or two weeks ago, which I'm sure you all received those in the mail. We hope you did anyway. If not, please give us a call, and we'll let you know what you owe. Do you have any questions on the collector's report?
Can you update us any on Travis Ellis?
We, the amount that we received this past month was a little under two thousand dollars. We did get a call yesterday that one of our larger accounts with him had come in yesterday with a five thousand dollar payment, so we were glad to see that. At this point, we have not reached the point that we have to have had to schedule any actually sales at the Courthay steps, so.
Can you give us a pressage on how we compensate Travis in regards to what we're taking in?
We actually do not. We, all of that comes from the taxpayer, and it's paid normally to him. Now, Ms. Harold will have a so-called refund where we had someone come into our office with a check to pay off their taxes, and also Mr. Ellis's fees. And in order for us to take that check, we had to post his fees as an overpayment in our system, and so that kind of went through the refund process that we will need to forward on to him this month. But we do not, unless we end up buying a piece of property at the Courthay steps, we there's nothing.
His fees are on top of the taxes that they are.
Exactly, and it's due from the taxpayer.
So this nineteen hundred dollars reflects what comes to the county, not?
This is taxes, yes.
Right, as far as what he's been being paid, that is not reflected in what we're seeing.
We normally do not see that unless, like I said, the other day, someone came in with a check for, and we're not gonna send them out the door and tell them to go to Edenton, we're afraid that check won't get to Edenton, so we take it.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Any other discoveries on our part-time voting process?
I have not talked with Mr. Black with that yet, and I need to call him, I just haven't taken the time to try and get in touch with him, so.
All right.
Any other questions in regard? Johnny's thinking.
How about the water situation?
I haven't had time to deal with that either. One thing I will say, and I know this is something that y'all have discussed in the past, is the every other month billing, which I know has not been a popular subject with the board and some of the citizens, which, you know, that's fine, but one thing that would help as far as the workload in our office, and y'all have all seen figures on what the fifteenth and sixteenth of the month can be like, is if we didn't go to an every other month billing, but at least we staggered the billing systems, where it's the same amount of work, the same cost, but you may have at least two billing cycles in the month, where maybe one due dates the fifteenth, one is the thirtieth, that it would at least stagger that workload through the month. And actually, by doing that, I know, and I'm assuming it was in the budget for this year, a part-time person with the water department, you really, if that billing was staggered, I really don't think you would need that part-time person, because right now, about the last week, week and a half of the month, the water department employee that's in my office is not doing much, because there's nothing there to do.
What are you saying, is having two billing cycles?
Have just two billing cycles.
Fifteenth and the thirtieth or something like that?
Right, it's not going to put any more work on the water department, the plant guys, because they're gonna have to read the same number of meters each month regardless. It's not gonna put any more mileage on the vehicles, because they're gonna be out there doing the same amount, it may be at two different times. It's, it would really make it a lot more fluent with the work in our office and spread that work through the month, and I think it also may help possibly with the cutoff situation, even if that was done twice a month, because I know now there are times we're not able to lock out everybody at the same time, because we don't have the locks to do it and that sort of thing, and it certainly would be no more cost, because you're sending the same amount of bills each month, you're just splitting them up into two different times.
So you guys, you saw the charts that I
And it certainly would be no more cost because you're sending the same amount of bills each month. You're just splitting them up into two different times.
So, um, you guys, you saw the charts that I had, that when Renee sent me those two minute, two year billing cycles and the graphs where it showed the peaks in the middle of the month for the activity coming to the door. And this process would not do, would not do anything far as the reading the meters would still be on a monthly basis. The only thing you're doing is say fifty percent are due to, say, the first Monday in the month. The other fifty percent are done the third Monday in the month. So this kind of evens the process and flow through the traffic through the department or the credit card situation. Nothing to do, we're not saving any money, but we're not losing any money. It's a process flow, uh, feature that has the potential to save, well, reallocate time in appropriate areas and have the, uh, chance that you don't have idle time or a crunch time, that you kind of smooth that process out. So, um.
What, what is the, uh, what's the date, the billing date on water now? Fifteen?
Fifteen.
We, well, the due date is actually the sixteenth. We send it out the last working day of the month, and the date is the sixteenth. And of course, the first month, I mean, we'd have to work through the bumps and whatnot to, to make the change.
It's a, it's a two-week cash flow. Well, it really wouldn't be if you went to the first Monday. You would actually increase the cash flow, to tell you the truth.
Well, it would come in quicker.
Yeah, that's right. You would increase the cash flow, but it'd be just a minimum of what? Maybe eight days, something like, could be eight days, potential eight to ten days.
But I, I do think.
Are you ready for that?
Something of that nature was in place, I think you would see that we might be able to get by without that part-time person.
Could you and, you and Timmy and Renee put something together on that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, before we get too far down this road, we might at least have the water department.
The current policy would have to be revamped.
I, I think it's, it's a smart thing to do, and three of y'all should be able to get together and put something together.
Thank you.
I mean, that would balance it out a little bit on everybody.
Can we do that by the night meeting or next month meeting? Let's have it done.
Uh, maybe next month.
October.
Not by the night meeting, but October meeting, we should.
Sounds good.
October meeting, I think it's a good idea.
Any other?
I think we're okay on that.
Okay. We do have some appeals, but I think before we go into that, maybe the easiest thing to do would be the charge to the collector and this, I think you had that in your packets that basically empowers me to collect the taxes that we just billed.
Okay, we, uh, this is a charge to the collector. By the county, we need a, uh, motion to, uh, to direct the tax collector to the authority to collect the taxes.
I'll make such, such motion to land a tax collector to collect all due taxes to Gates County.
Emphasis on all.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that, uh, that motion be changed to charge.
Charge.
Charge the tax collector.
I correct that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion.
That is more appropriate. Thank you.
We've got a motion to charge the ta- tax collector to collect all due taxes of Gates County. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. You are so charged.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the appeals. We had the one that I had mentioned a few weeks ago with Sunbury School, and then I have had a couple others from, um, a couple taxpayers come in that I did email the other day. Did everyone receive that email? And also, you had the memo in your packets in reference to Sunbury School, but, um, Toby asked me to put that in a little more black and white and leave all the words out. Did you send that out to them?
Yes, they should have got it.
The spreadsheet?
I've got an email, but I didn't bring copies of them. Just go, you can go over it.
We'll, we'll skip all the words, but basically in reviewing the properties involved with the Sunbury School property, which actually includes four properties, the school itself on a five point six two acre tract, the gym, which is on one point one two acres, the old teach ridge, which is on seventy eight hundredths of an acre, and then the clubhouse is on fifty eight hundredths of an acre. And in reviewing those cards, some things had kind of jumped out at me as far as the condition of the building, especially the school building. My property record cards here. I believe the condition of the front section of the school building was actually in fair condition and the back section was in average condition, which I think everybody here can agree that was not.
Without a roof, it probably not average.
No. So what I basically would recommend is changing the condition of the front section of the building to poor and then the back section to very poor. And basically what that does is takes the prior value of eight hundred seventy three thousand five forty nine down to four hundred eighty one thousand four hundred and twelve. The gym currently has a value of two hundred thirty nine thousand eight forty one, and that's the gym and the property. I would not recommend at this point making any changes to that. That's in an average condition, and I, I think I agree with that. The teach ridge was listed in an average condition, and I do think that needs to be brought down to a fair condition, which the current value on that is two hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars. With bringing it down to a fair condition would bring it down to one ninety seven oh twenty nine. The clubhouse is currently in fair condition. That is listed at twenty three thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. I would not recommend any changes to that. Looking at the four properties as a whole, the current total value on the properties is one million three hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. With the recommended changes, it would bring it down to nine hundred and forty two thousand two hundred. Any questions in reference to that?
One question, Renee. Um, on the teach ridge, have you been inside?
I have not actually been inside.
Yeah.
No.
In, in future reviews, you might want to go inside. As I look at the teach ridge and whatever, I see a lot of outside growth and, you know, the maintenance of it is, is not, uh, uh, as good as it, well, it's, it's not being maintained, basically. So, uh, I think that we need to look inside as well and make sure that, that doesn't reflect on a, 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 more of a depreciated value as well.
Yeah. You'd like to move on the other property, or the school property is really the only other one I'm making a recommendation in. Um, you know, I don't mind going in the teach ridge and taking a look at the inside of that and then coming back with that with the mid-month meeting if, I'm assuming it's locked, so.
Yeah, I think, well, except for the windows that are broken out in the back.
Rather not.
They're locked, because they stay there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are we, um, are we supposed to deliver these numbers to the prospective buyers?
They, they'll, they'll get them once the, the final.
I think once we're done, we'll, we'll communicate them through Claudia Devaney.
Okay. Is there anything that we can share regarding that, that process?
I would say the process is not complete. However, it is progressing.
It's in the ninety year, ninety day state at this point. Okay. Gentlemen, you want, uh, act on the, uh, the school, uh, it's only action that we actually would be needing to take.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, act on a reduction of the school. Uh, we'd make a point that we're doing this in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one oh five two eighty seven, uh, which allows the assessor, uh, under item A two, to correct an appraisal error resulting from a misapplication of the scheduled standards and rules used in the county's most recent general reappraisal. So that gives us the legal authority to do this.
Okay.
Without any question. So, uh, that would be my motion, uh, that we allow the reduction because we have closed the Board of E and R, and now we're doing this based on an observation. And, uh, my motion would be in accordance with one oh five two eighty seven, uh, A two, to reduce these values.
You've heard the motion. Commissioner Jordan May, do I have a second?
I have one question beforehand. So Renee, when we do this, basically, um, the normal construction in progress, um, revaluation at the end of the year to add to the tax base?
If there, if there has been, if the property is transferred and there have been any improvements, those improvements will be picked up for January.
So we are, okay.
Even, even if it has a percentage.
Sounds good. I second the motion.
All right. We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, you, and you'll bring the, uh, the teachers back to us, uh, at the evening meeting?
Yeah.
This month. All right. Thank you, Renee.
Okay. I did have the two other properties that taxpayers had come in on. The first property is a double wide mobile home. It's located on one point five four acres of land. The double wide is actually a nineteen seventy four double wide that had had a carport added on it in nineteen eighty nine. And when the revale was done, the nineteen eighty nine year was put in as an effective year on both the double wide and the carport instead of the car, the double wide itself being left at nineteen seventy four, which put a value on the seventy four double wide with the carport of seventy two thousand four seventy four. To go back and correct the year on the double wide to nineteen seventy four and leaving the year on the carport as being built nineteen eighty nine, it actually lowers the value of that double wide to forty thousand seventy dollars.
Is this, is this that double wide just past, um, Brian's house? Okay.
And this, the taxpayer questioned this actually with their renewal of their insurance policy this past year because I think they were only actually able to, um, yeah, I think it's around twenty five thousand dollars that the insurance company would put on.
Did they, they come to you about this?
And, and like I say, the year that the double wide was built was seventy four. But I'm assuming when the carport, that year when they entered that, it, they just put it on the double wide as well.
Ben's, the Board of E and R has been, uh, we, we can, we can.
You still are allied as the Board of Commissioners.
We can act on this.
And I think I have a copy.
We need to do these individual, I think, don't we?
Um, I would, yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about the, uh?
Now, this didn't come in during the time of the E and R board review.
No.
You know, there again, we're in a, we're in the same situation where, you know, this is a discovery. It has to meet the general statute of two eighty.
This is the common statute that allows you to do this.
Did they just purchase this, or did it just come up after the, uh?
It actually.
The insurance problem?
It did, it actually came up after the insurance.
So they probably didn't know in time to be, to, to bring it to the Board of E and R. How long did they own the property? You know? I remember it was sold several years ago.
I don't think I have the date on this card that I have. It's been a few years, I think. I don't, I don't have the date on the property card itself as to when it was actually purchased, but I think it's been a few years.
And this was done during the reevaluation. The date was changed, is that right? So the last three years it's been.
That nineteen eighty nine was put as an effective date on everything, not just the carport.
Any, any other questions, gentlemen?
Most statutes are designed to, uh, to bring clarity to a topic. When I read this, it does not bring any clarity to the issue. What it does is it, it throws, it sounds like me, it throws everything else out of the book.
Basically, what it does is once the Board of E and R closes, it allows you as the Board of Commissioners to do this.
To make adjustments to something that comes up after the Board of E and R. I mean, it's only fair that we do this, it's property.
Well, the reason it's in place is because if you, if you, uh, discover an error, you need to correct the error.
That, that's what I think.
The statute goes both ways, raising and lowering, so.
Right.
That's right. And we just had that process.
We just had the process.
Going the other way.
Going the other way.
It's a statute. It is what it is.
Henry, you, you okay with this?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with it. Uh, you know, but you have to look at all the statutes as a whole. You know, which statute trumps one another? And you've got three twenty five, you've got two eighty six. You know, you gotta make sure that one doesn't, uh, disagree with the other. But, uh, as I said before, uh, two eighty six allows you to correct an error. And I think that's, uh, that's where, that's where our authorization is. In a, in a law, in accordance with this as well. This is more of a general, but I like to be specific. This is an error. We're looking at it as an error, and we're going back and fixing an error, so, and I don't have a problem with it. I do, I am concerned with, uh, we didn't get the, uh, property tax record. I have them to pull it up. I, I, when, when we get this kind of information, we need to be able to pull it up and look at it.
Wrong.
And just to have a statement like that, it, it, uh, it kind of concerns me that I don't have all the information. But I did look at it. Uh, it did not have an effective age on the property record card. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, why wasn't it there?
The reason it was not on the effective, the effective age is on the property record card. When you go into our system, you have the first page of the data that actually covers the entire structure, all elements of the structure, whether it's the home, porch, carport, it covers all those elements. And then you have a data page on each of those elements individually. When it's going to appear on that page is when you have an effective date entered on those individual elements. In this case, it was entered on that first page where it applied to the entire house. That's why it didn't apply to the entire house instead of just a carport.
Pitt, would you like to weigh in on this? Ben's with all the general statutes, and you are our attorney.
Well, the general, the general statute will allow y'all, just as you may say, in this case, particularly in the, when there's an error made, it comes to light after the E and R, but it's not sitting any longer. So I think you definitely have authority to make a change up or down.
Okay.
Under, under strictly construed and Paul's statute, we're in to go.
Okay. Uh, gentlemen, would, would, would you, uh, would you entertain a motion to accept this change?
So move.
For property one.
For property one. Just, just property one.
I'll move, I'll move on that.
All got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. You want to go through your second property?
The second property, and Mr. Jordan, this is one you would not have been able to have pulled up on the GIS system because it actually is a leasehold property. It's just a building that's located on someone else's property. Pass the copy of that property record card. This is a garage that was, I believe it was built in nineteen ninety, that was actually originally built for commercial purposes. It's located behind the gentleman's house on Hall Lane. He stated to me that it was built in nineteen ninety for thirteen thousand dollars. There is, and if you'll see in the notes section, and y'all excuse me for constantly messing with my glasses. They broke this morning, so. With bifocals, when they start slipping, it gets kind of rough. The, if you'll notice in the notes section on the property record card, which is about midway over on the left-hand side, it states that the building is in poor condition, that the owner, I believe it says that the owner is not able to repair it. But if you'll look further down on the, where it gives the elements of the building itself, down in this section with the card here, you'll see an L.
Mm-hmm.
Which actually stands for fair condition. Which actually stands for fair condition.
Right.
So, the property record card is actually conflicting itself, it's stating in one place that it's in poor condition, but yet it's valued as in fair condition. If we change the fair to poor, it would bring the value of the building down from thirty nine thousand one hundred and five dollars to thirty two thousand eight fifty six. The building is not in the best of shape, um, it is no longer a commercial property. It's basically a garage behind the gentleman's house that's being used for storage at this point. My opinion is to change it from fair to poor because of the conflict on the property record card. I think that may be just making a correction in that case. If you were to choose to do anything else to the property due to the fact that it's no longer used as a commercial property. What I would suggest there is just recoding it as an unfinished garage, which is basically what it's being used for at this point. Which would bring the value down to twenty five thousand eight hundred.
Renee, I have no problem with that. The only thing that I had back, when I looked at this, cause this, it set off light bells in my head. Back in December when I, you sent me all those tax cards and I compiled those. This particular individual had ten consecutive years of non-payment. I look in this, and I did see that, uh, on here, I think it was paid up through two thousand and four.
Yeah. He's, the, the property, and I, I'm speaking behind the taxpayer. It's my understanding from him, the property was, or the business was turned over to his son. That didn't go very well. He was, the building is in the name of the business, it's not in the individual's name. He was unaware that his son was not taking care of things until things just kinda folded. And he, at this point, is making payments.
So is that the reason that from the December to, when this was published, I saw those payments?
Probably so, yeah. He, he is making payments on them.
So it looks to me like that's, uh, six, nine, fifteen.
It's a three.
Eighteen, about nineteen hundred dollars was, was paid against this property. And we are probably twenty three hundred dollars behind.
Yeah.
Well, that was through two thousand and nine, so you got.
Right.
Ten and eleven on that.
And I know, well, in fact, he came in the other day and made a payment, just the other day. Um, and, and like I say, this doesn't involve any property. However, the building is on the gentleman's property, but the building was listed to the business. And for us to do any further as far as whether it needs to go back in his name versus the business name, we'd have to kind of audit that a little more from the accounting side.
Basically, what we, we really need to do is correct the property card and put, put some sort of, the card reflects it to what it is.
I, I do think, like I say, it is conflicting, the property card where it states in the comment lines that it's in poor condition, but then yet it's valued in fair. As to whether you choose, I, I do think that is just simply a correction that needs to be made. But as to whether you choose to look at it more as an individual property, as it being a garage versus a commercial garage, and lowering that value as strictly.
Well, I think, I, I really don't think, uh, we're allowed to do that. When I look under B of two, one oh five, two eighty seven, it says that, um, in the year which the general reapla- reappraisal of real property in the county is not made. The assessor may not increase or decrease the appraised value of the property as determined on the general statute two eighty six for the following reasons. Normal physical depreciation of improvements, and number two, inflation, deflation, or other economic changes affecting the county in general. So I look at this as an economic situation, uh, whereas, you know, it's being used for what, what, what use it is. And I'm not sure that we'd wanna get into that in a non-appraisal, reappraisal year.
Right.
But I do agree that the, the condition that was, uh, clerical error or misapplication of standards, and, and we can, uh, correct that.
I, I would be more inclined to change the, the bottom part, if it, you said the building is not in his name, it's in the business name.
It's in the busi- it's, it's, it's in the business name.
If it was, at the point in time, if it was changed into his name, then I would be more, more, uh, uh, more, uh, willing to change it at that time.
Right.
If it was just in the business name, I, I don't see where we can do anything with that. All right, uh, would, would, wouldn't you gentlemen like to make it as a motion that we change from, uh, poor, fair, uh, fair to poor and correct the card?
I'll make the motion that the property two, um, appraised value be corrected, uh, in accordance with general statute one oh five, two eighty seven. Uh, to reflect the accurate values of thirty two thousand eight hundred fifty six dollars.
Well, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay?
Okay, thank you, and if the gentleman wants to pursue that any further, I'll just ask that he's scheduled with the Board of V and R. Later date. And I do believe that is all I have. However, Ms. Harold does have a few refunds, and then as, as I stated before, one of these is just strictly where we need to funnel the money to Mr. Ellis as an overpayment. But she'll come and present those to you.
Okay, thank you Renee.
Thank you.
Hello Gwen, how are you?
Good morning, fine.
Morning.
Um, if you would, let's address the first, um, item that goes to the attorney. The amount was one thousand three fifty seven ninety five.
Okay.
You'll see that this document states request for payment. This was not actually a refund of taxes, as Ms. McGinnis referred to earlier. Um, we were paid on a, a foreclosure account, the taxes were paid current, and this would be the fees that we now need to send to the attorney.
Did these were the fees that were paid to the county for, that the attorney was supposed to get, okay?
Yes, sir, those were specifically the attorney fees.
I think we probably need to act on these individual.
I agree.
Any questions?
Um, I'd just like to state, uh, the amount here. So, so this is a foreclosure, just so that people can understand. This is a foreclosure, and the fees that will be going to the attorney were paid by the citizen.
Yes, sir.
At, at the, uh, dis, at the foreclosure process. One thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars and ninety five cents.
Yes, sir.
Paid, paid as a, basically as a penalty, I guess you would say, and, uh, and now we're dispersing that money to the attorney for services.
Yes, sir. The taxpayer actually came to our office, brought the taxes current, and wanted to go ahead and pay those attorney fees at the same time.
Okay, very good.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept this request for payment to, uh, Travis Ellis.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make this payment for attorney fees to Travis Ellis.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next?
The next account, um, if you look at the account, the amount of two hundred eighty dollars and seventy seven cents. Um, as you'll see in reason for refund, this is an overpayment of the two thousand eleven taxes. Um, they had been making prepayments and continuing to make payments, um, till recently, and in this past month. Um, this was an overpayment in August on the two thousand eleven taxes. At this time, we are not taking those as prepayment for two thousand twelve.
We're not doing that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, there were no other tax bills due for this taxpayer.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we return said fees to taxpayer for overpayment of taxes.
All right, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next?
And the third item is, um, the same situation. It's an overpayment of two thousand eleven taxes. There was one bill that was due, which was a current two thousand eleven, uh, bill. And you'll see that on the first line of that document. We will take that amount from the total refund, and then the taxpayer would be refunded the difference, and you'll see that on the, the second line. At the top. And then there were no other outstanding bills.
The thirty four dollars is, is what the bill is due.
Yes, that's right, thirty four seventy five, and then the one forty one thirty nine would be returned to the taxpayer.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen?
Uh, wait a minute, uh. At the bottom we say, amount refunded one seventy six.
Yes, sir, that is the total refund, that was the total overpayment in August. However, there was one outstanding bill, so part of that total refund would be paid back to the tax office. And then the balance would be sent back to the taxpayer.
So we're actually refunding one forty one thirty nine?
Uh, that would be the taxpayer refund, yes, sir. The thirty four seventy five would actually be paid, as you'll note, to a different account that the taxpayer has with our office. That's why it's all a refund, because part of that will be going to a different account. And the other would be a refund from this current account that was overpaid.
First time we've seen one like this.
Any other questions? Will they entertain a motion to accept the request for refund?
So move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you Gwen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, to say to the, uh, to Gwen and the Tax Department that the way they're presenting these are very, very clearly, very clearly presented, I appreciate it.
All right, uh, we're gonna take a recess now. Our planning director, Ms. Morgan Jethro.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Just like you on cellphone.
Well, this is in regards to, thank you Graham, this is in regards to performance bonds for cellphone towers. I happened to stumble across this a couple of weeks ago. Um, we never established performance bonds in the county, so it is up to you if you would like to establish one, or if you would not. My planning board decided a hundred and twenty five percent of the total cost. Uh, it is at your discretion whether you would like to agree with that number, choose another number, or dele- uh, delete it entirely together from the ordinance.
We, we've got two cellphone towers in the county that are not, that have been built and not being used now, is that correct?
Uh, that is my understanding. I did a permit for Verizon Wireless for the one over near thirteen, July of last year. And I've been trying to contact them to find out the status of that tower, as well as the one over there near Gatling Road.
Well, we can't, we can't actually put a performance bond on something that's already been, this would be future cellphone.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the hundred and twenty five percent, uh, based on? I mean, you know, when, when you put up a tower, obviously you've got the cost of the equipment, you've got the preparation of the site. Uh, and whatever utilities that you may wanna include. Uh, but for the county, we would want to cover the cost of removing it. So when you say a hundred and twenty five percent of the cost of the project, what does that mean? Are we talking about the equipment? I mean, if it costs, uh, fifty thousand dollars to, to put up the tower, uh, and a hundred thousand dollars for the equipment. Are we saying we want a hundred, a hundred, uh, two hundred thousand dollars?
It's a hundred and twenty five percent of the total cost of the entire project. The hundred and twenty five percent, um, was a number that my planning board came up with after getting a survey from other counties in the area of how they treat this. Now, not all counties or towns in the area require these, Bertie does not, Currituck does not, Elizabeth City does not. Harnett County is a hundred and twenty five percent, the town of Edington is a hundred and ten percent.
Maury, just, uh, before I'm clear, I'm sorry, just so I'm clear. What you're asking is that the builder of the antenna would have to pay a hundred and twenty, or acquire bond for a hundred and twenty five percent at construction.
Mm-hmm.
To cover demolition. So if this thing lasts for fifty years, we're gonna hold a bond on somebody for a hun- for fifty years? I, I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, exactly. Um, uh, the performance bond can either be a letter of credit, it can be cash, or a certified check, or the, or the bond in favor of Gates County. Um, in the full amount, shall remain in full force and effect until any necessary site restoration is completed to restore the site to the condition before the permit was issued. So.
So again, my question would be, if someone wanted to put a cellphone tower in Gates County, we would acquire a hundred and twenty five percent bond of construction cost today, today's value?
Yes, sir.
That could go in infinity into the future?
Yes, sir.
Before it ever's called?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that what the other county is doing? I mean.
Uh, uh, my understanding is yes.
I, I would, okay, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is a, a business or an individual has made a decision to put up a tower. He would own the property himself. What are we trying to protect ourselves from?
Typically, they are leased from individuals as well, but.
But, but we don't have, it's, it's a business, we don't have any connection to that, to that business. They're not performing any duties for us. So, I, you know, we, we say that one county has a, a performance bond requirement, and one doesn't. So, um, so I, I, again, I, I can't think of what we're protecting our, trying to protect ourselves from.
And I do understand that perspective, that's a very, very valid point. I guess the idea behind it is so that the landscape is not dotted with cellphone towers that aren't being utilized. Other counties require, um, need or intent letters from the county engineers saying, well, there's no other cellphone towers for these antennas to be placed upon. There is a need for another one, we don't have that requirement.
That's a zoning ordinance thing of whether you, uh, will allow one to be placed in a specific area, right?
Yes, sir.
So if you were to have.
Whereas, uh, the other thing is here, um, does Mr. Olds have a performance bond?
Does he have a performance bond?
Yes.
I believe, uh, that was handled during session.
Does he, or does he not?
No, sir.
I don't think so.
No, sir.
He does not?
No, sir.
So why would you ask these people to have a performance bond?
And I, and I understand that perspective too.
Then the other perspective I see is the hundred and twenty five percent, which, um, most of the time, if you start something. And it costs you a hundred percent to get it done, even if you mess it up, it's not gonna cost a hundred percent to de- demolish it. So why are we at a hundred and twenty five percent? And as Toby said, this is not a, uh, you gotta have a sign-off thing if you're gonna have this. Some, somebody's gotta sign off. Now, who do we have qualified to sign off that this is completed specifically? This is governed by the FCC Corporation, Federal Communications Corporation. So if you have a tower up sitting in the county, that you've authorized to be permitted and put up in a place. What, if it's, um, under the guidelines of the FCC, it's properly lighted and whatever, what are we to say that whether you're using it or not? That we're gonna tear it down, or, why, why would we do that?
That's a very valid point. My, my planning board chose a hundred and twenty five percent as their appropriate number.
Um, the, one of the, and this, not, not been a part of this at, at any given time. But I did have a friend that worked in a cellphone tower company that were constructing cellphone towers across the country. In prefix of building cellphone towers and putting antennas on them. Uh, the company was, uh, that they were building for went to Funtland, was bought out by another company, and they had about thirty cellphone towers sitting around the, the country in Oklahoma and Kansas. That were never used, just sitting there, I reckon, big deer stands or whatever that might be useful. I think that was part of the idea was to make sure that they got completed and used for something, not the destruction of the taking it down.
Yes, sir.
I, I believe that was part of the idea, but, but I, I, one of the guys I worked with, he, he did that, and he said they had like thirty cellphone towers that were built across Oklahoma and Kansas that were never used, they're just sitting there right today. And they were trying to get the company to make sure that they are used for something, and that's, I think that was part of the, the idea behind this.
Well, the structural maintenance of it is, and today is a grid of about a thirty, thirty mile grid, uh, all over the United States. That's the ultimate plan.
Uh, uh, there, a lot of them were built thinking that they were gonna, but the, with the, uh, communications department changing and, and the type of commu- the, the thirty mile grid might not be a good number anymore, next year they may change, you know?
But what, what is happening in our Wi- Wi-Fi network that we have today? With everyone walking around with a smartphone, and Apple smartphones are taking over the world. Uh, kids today, uh, finger tapping, this, I mean, it's, it's gone. Uh, kids today, uh, finger tapping, this, I mean, it's, it's going, it's comstaying.
Thomas, you're on the planning board, you, have you got any input on what, what the, the planning board was thinking about this when, when y'all thought about it?
Yes, I had a Tom Langston that booked us, what we just found by that end. I voted against it because, uh, there was a lot of, uh, uh, information that was not approved to us.
Thomas, you might come here too, so everybody can hear, we're trying to get this thing right.
Chase has got a wireless.
Chase, you got a wireless over there? He's got a wireless, just, just so we can get everything, get an idea of how we're doing this.
It was a lot of, good evening, I'm Thomas Langston. Is this on, sir?
Yes, I'm.
Okay.
Walk out here to you in front of the camera if you don't mind, sorry.
I don't mind the camera. Um, no, I did not vote for it because of a lot of information that was not approved to us for, to vote for it. And, uh, I do remember when they put the one up there by, uh, the old Dawson Rogers. And I do remember the specs that, uh, the fellow that put it up, I was a man of being nosy. So I'm curious about what's going on in Gates County. And I thought that what we should have done in last month meeting was left it alone because we didn't know enough about it to even talk about it. And nobody had any information on it. The one down at Highway thirteen, when you come across the line, that was another one. And neither one of them to this day have an antenna or anything about it. Now, the one at Highway thirteen, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the fellow by the name of Mr., um, he used to be on the planning board, what's his name, uh? Oh, my God. The fellow right across the line on the left-hand side coming into North Carolina South.
Hmm?
That's it, you call his name, what's his name was?
Leslie.
Leslie, yes. He, he has, he's been charged up and he can tell us all about it. I did talk to him briefly about it, but there's a lot of unfinished things about that. And then also Mr. Edgar Mitchell, which is the inspector for the county of anything coming in the county, we should have got him involved. And that was another reason why I didn't go and get involved with this situation. And I thought that planning board went over their head involving with it and we should have left it alone.
Thank you, Thomas. Joe, would you, I mean, you're on the planning board too, I'd like to have your opinion too. I mean, we're, 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 go get the mic if you don't mind. Yeah, okay.
Just pick one, Joe.
We'll, we'll get this worked out eventually. It's all new to us.
We chose the hundred and twenty-five percent to, as the protection for the county, to make sure that while in progress of being put up, there was nothing, you know, if circumstances would stop it. Also, um, I read somewhere now that after a year, if this thing is not in operation, it has to be taken down. And if the person that owns the land does not do it, then it's up to the county to take it down. So that bond was to protect the county. If the land owner can't afford to take that tower down, which I'm sure would be very expensive, it won't fall back on the county. That's the reason we done this.
Okay.
To protect the county.
So why would you tear something down? Uh, regardless of whether it was, was being used or not, unless it was infringing upon the taxpayers, uh, and was governed by the FCC? And that, that's the key here, is governed by the FCC with lighting on it. Why would you require someone to dismantle something?
We were only going by ordinances from other counties, that's what we were relying on to come up with something here. A hundred and twenty-five percent was something we come up to present to y'all, and, uh, this would be up to y'all to either accept.
It's not a matter of that, the one twenty-five, Joe, is, is a matter of why would you require someone to tear something down just because it's not performing at that time? If it's not infringing upon any taxpayers or the FCC's ability, why would you do that?
I think, I think we're dealing with some, a lot of unknowns here, because I, I mean, I don't know what would require removal of a tower, uh, myself. But I think before we can go any further on this, we need to get a whole lot more information, um, for the uses of these towers, uh. We may be wasting a lot of time trying to do something, but we, before we get the right information. It may be FCC requirement to do something with them, I don't know. I know there is a maintained lighting on them, no matter where they are, what they're being used for.
That's right.
Uh, yeah, I agree, I think it would be very difficult to go to a private property owner who's made a deal with the telecommunications company and tell them they have to remove their tower simply because they haven't activated it.
I think, I think this request, we need to put to the table.
Um, I'd like to make a comment on it though.
Okay.
I, I appreciate the planning board researching other counties and, and seeing what they're doing. I'm thinking that maybe we would be better served by some ordinance that stipulated some covenants. Uh, meaning, um, fencing, or, you know, some of those requirements or whatever. And maybe even, um, have something in there, um, about inactivity at, over a certain period of time. I, I was sitting here listening to Johnny's comments, and, and they were good comments. And I'm thinking, you know, if somebody goes out and builds a house to rent, but they, they have a hard time getting a renter. You know, they could go for a long period of time, you know, we wouldn't require them to, to tear the, tear the house down. Um, I'm, I'm pro, pro-business, and this person has come to the county and put up a tower that's gonna, gonna benefit our ci- citizens with the, uh, people putting antennas on it. So, um, I wouldn't wanna jump the gun there. We, we may wanna look at the counties closer that didn't, or, or that don't require the ordinance and see what their thinking was. I think that would make a lot of sense.
Agreed.
I, I'm sure you guys spent, spent some, some time on this, a- and again, I appreciate it, but hearing the comments back and forth, um, I'd like to revisit it.
Okay. Henry, you want input on?
Yeah, and figuring back on what Jack said, I, I'm, I'm really concerned about discouraging businesses from coming with, you know, excess, uh, bonds and securities. You know, we wanna protect the property and I understand that, but, uh, if we're gonna put, uh, any type requirements on them, it, it needs to be something that's reasonable, uh, something that's not gonna discourage them, and, and only to cover what the county necessarily needs to, to accomplish, uh, removal or whatever. So I, I agree with Jack and, and, uh, John and all the rest, that I think we need to take a good look at this, uh, table it and, uh.
Well, table is, is the question, maybe just a, a non-action on it right now until we get more information.
Well, that's fine.
Tabled, we'll have to address it within sixty days, maybe just, uh, uh, a non-action until we get more information.
The, uh.
Back to the planning board for further study.
Okay. Or refer back to the planning board for further study.
The other important thing is about the liability insurance, and I don't know how you would, how you actually, um, would regulate whether someone had that personal liability, which that, that would be a concern, I mean. But I would think the responsible property owner would, would do those things himself to protect him from any lawsuit from someone infringing upon the property and getting hurt or whatever, so. But I don't know how we would go about as citizens of, of regulating that, uh, that someone did have the insurance. Other than when they're building, I mean, obviously you would have the requirements and the building permits and stuff, but after that timeframe, how do you, how would the county get involved in that situation to say that John Horr has, uh, liability insurance on his, uh, water sled or something like that? Who would do that? And how do we, and who, who are the qualified people we have in the county to go out there to a tower and tell for sure that it's in operational specs? Uh, do we have a, a JGL lift or something, we gonna put someone up there, or we gonna give Jack a strap and send him up the pole, or what are we gonna do? Who's gonna do that?
I'm not.
Who's qualified?
I promise you that. Uh, I think, well, do you wanna make that a motion to refer us back to the planning board for more study? Or, 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 or something else, so we move, move on forward?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would make the motion that we return this to the, uh, planning board. I'll make that a motion.
Well, we got a motion, I have a second.
And, uh, with, and I think we need to do some research into the FCC, uh, Commission too, as to what their specs are for his communication towers across the country. I'll second what Jack said.
Alright, my motion in a second to return it back to the planning board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. But we're gonna send it back to the planning board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be only fair to the planning board that, uh, we've had these comments, we've made these comments up here. It would only be fair to them that we go back to our computers and send them an email about our, our thoughts and concerns, so that they'd have that to work with.
Each of you, all, each of you would, uh, would do that and send it to the chairman and have her, uh, distribute it to the planning board. Alright?
Yeah.
And anybody would like to visit the planning board meeting?
I, I, I do think they need to clarify, um, exactly what the performance bond is gonna cover. Um, you know, we, we, we need some, some hard numbers here. Uh, so, I think it's, it's fair to, to let the planning board know that we're, what we, we're returning is unsatisfactory. A hundred and twenty-five percent is not what we're looking for, because we don't know what that covers and what the numbers are gonna involve.
I'm not, I'm not sure bond is even what we need anyway.
Well, and that, and that's my whole point here is, if you're holding one person accountable for a bond, we need to be holding all people, developers in the county.
I don't think bonding is everybody's answer.
Let, let, let me finish this, this point. You came to us with this performance bond because there was a company that wanted to erect a tower here in the county. And you said you couldn't move forward on it, I believe I'm quoting you correctly. You couldn't move forward on it until we addressed the performance bond issue. So how is that gonna affect what you're doing now with this potential business that wants to come to the county?
They're gonna have to be on hold until we get this resolved.
Well, I, I'm not sure that's what, what we wanna do, so, Jim, I think we.
I'm making a motion, Henry, I'm on the second.
Well, I think I'd.
We, 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 we've got, where, where we're at now is where we're at today. We don't have to act on this, we're at a point in, in time right now, we don't have a performance bond, there's no reason it should stop any other business from coming here at this point in time. We're at where we are today. What, what we have today is.
Would you make that as a motion, Graham?
I, I'm willing to do that. That we, that we, that whatever, any business comes in now, that, that we're at a point in, in history until we make a change, we don't hold anybody up. It goes through the same process.
I'll second that motion.
But that current business that wants to come in right now, you're not gonna hold him back as a result of not having a performance bond in place.
Current status is where we are.
I may proceed them forward?
Yes.
That sounds perfect.
Uh, well, we haven't voted yet, but I'm, I'm, we have a motion on the floor and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Yes.
So we are where we are today.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Maury. Alright, the next one I generate will be Patrice Lester. Got another truck you want to get rid of? Got a gate on your fence yet?
The gate is complete, actively in operation, in operation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Patrice.
I, um, am bringing a vehicle to, to request surplus, it's a two thousand and seven bank conversion Ford. Um, it was originally purchased April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. It currently has two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, um, miles, and it needs a set of tires.
It's gotten broke in.
Exactly. And I'm hoping to get some good money from it.
Do you, you need approval to put it on, to put it on, to, um, Gov.D deals to take it out of your fleet? Or you, you've already taken it out of your fleet there, right?
I've taken it out of my fleet, it has been replaced.
Alright, y'all have heard this from Patrice, do I have any comments on this issue? Not, will entertain a motion to allow her to proceed with the, uh, sale of this, uh, surplus item?
So move.
I've got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay.
Thank you.
Sell it. Get lots of money for it. Alright, well now we're moving to old business section, um, our first one on there is Toby, I can't imagine.
Okay, the, uh, first issue I have is Mike Scott, Mike, I don't know if you wanna come up, if you wanna talk from there, but a meeting or two ago.
He's gotta come up somewhere, so you.
Yeah.
Come on up if you will, Mike. We're gonna get this worked out.
We talked about the Rural Center grant, and once it is obtained, how will it be administered and, and the administrative payment and finances? And the board decided to wait until Mike could come and address you on how it would work exactly, so he is here to address you on the Rural Center grant.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, nice to be here. I wanna compliment you on your PA system, it's great.
Thanks, thank you.
Um, I, and, and I think if, unless I am mistaken, I think we were, in that particular instance, Toby, we were talking about the administration for the EDA grant, I believe it was.
Unless the Rural Center grant?
The Rural Center grant, uh, administration will actually be, is funded through the, the grant funds. Uh, that was actually included in the budget. In the county's overall budget, uh, that included EDA, CDBG, Rural Center, Golden Leaf, and all other sorts. Uh, it was included, the, except for the Rural Center funds, the administration funds were actually included in the county's, uh, funding commitment in the overall project. So all those funds have previously been built into the overall budget, uh, as was originally presented to, uh, EDA and the Rural Center. Um, so that's, so that, that's how those funds have already been, uh, approved by the, uh, by the board. Uh, we, what we talked about originally, uh, as far as handling the, the grant writing, uh, and the grant administration, is we presented, um, a proposal and the board approved it. On the grant writing piece is we identified each grant that we would prepare and the fee for each grant. And that was, that's been approved, and then we just, we just invoice as each grant is, is completed. What we talked about then as far as the administration, because there's a little bit of difference in administration requirements from one grant to the other, is that we would treat each admini- each grant with its own separate, uh, administration contract. Uh, because there are different requirements for, for each one. And so, you may end up with four or five contracts for administration services, because it's just too complex to put all that into, into one. And besides that, you shouldn't, if, if a grant doesn't get funded for some reason, that shouldn't be included in, in a blanket administration contract. So we decided to tr- to treat each, uh, grant administrative services on a, a grant by grant basis. And so, but, but in the overall budget that the board originally approved, uh, for EDA and the Rural Center, uh, that was included in the county's commitment. So there's no, the, 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 I guess the point is, there's no additional cost to the county, uh, that from.
It's all fit built into the budget.
From anything that you've already previously approved.
And the administration cost is built into the grant, which is allowed, each grant has an administrative allowance.
Well, in some ca- it, it is in the Rural Center grant, Commissioner Jordan. One of the reasons that I think we decided, that you all decided to, uh, to pay for these services, administration services out of your portion of the funds, is kinda the same way you did on the engineering part. It really expedited the whole process. Uh, that way you didn't have to meet federal procurement requirements, you just had to meet state procurement requirements to secure these services. And so it expedited the whole process as far as the grant preparation, engineering and so forth. So basically, the county's portion, the, the county's funds that are identified in the original budget primarily are to pay for the engineering and the grant administration and the grant preparation services. And that's your match also, so it really kinda got two birds with ones, with one stone by doing that.
Any other questions?
Questions? Mike, explain to me when you said the match, now I'm, I'm the tail end of this process, I didn't really understand that compared to.
Well, in particular.
I didn't realize, when I calculated the numbers that Toby had up there, uh, I know we got a cash flow thing with these, uh,
Right.
that we get reimbursed at the end of the process, but what is the match process, I'm not.
Well, you're, you're actually over meeting your match, the way, the way it worked out, just simply because we identified all the funding sources. And we, we lined, we lined them up with what the cost estimates were for the project. And, uh, we're, it looks like right now that we're gonna probably be within, we're probably gonna be within ninety percent or so, eighty-five to ninety percent of grant funds compared to ten to fifteen percent of, of local funds. And that ten to fifteen percent is basically gonna be your engineering and.
That has already been dispersed.
No, sir, it hasn't been dispersed.
It has not?
No, it hasn't been dispersed yet.
So the money that we've paid.
Some of it has, but, but not all of it has.
So the money that we've spent the cabin off up front has nothing to do with this?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of.
Well, part, part of it does, I think, I, of course, I'm not, yeah, I'm not privy to everything that, that you paid your engineer at this point. But I know there's some work they did on the front end. But, but they have, but, but in.
And there's sixty more, uh, I think on that budget. And there's sixty more, uh, I think on that budget amendment that's carried forward, right, to be expensed?
I think that's right.
But the, but the Rural Center, just to address, uh, your question about required match, the Rural Center, for example, requires five percent local match, cash match. Um, uh, if the, EDA is only gonna pay, uh, up to a maximum of fifty percent of the project anyway. So, you know, there was gonna be other funds involved with, with theirs as well. So, when I say match, it's, it's not, it's not, all of that is not required match, but some of it is, is required and some of it is just funds that the county needed to put in just to round out the, the total budget.
So when you say fifty percent now, are we still talking about the two point six or the five point two? Phase one and phase two? What are we talking here?
Five point two is the number that you just created. I don't know where that number came from.
That was, that was the phase two number.
The two point six is what we're working on.
Gus, can you speak to five point two million? Cause I've never heard.
It was one of those things that had five point two million dollars in, phase one and phase two.
Very briefly, I believe the five point two number is inclusive of expansion of your waste ore plant, doubling your waste ore plant at some point in the future. That's not contained in your current project.
Right. I understand that, but there was a five two out there on phase two.
If, if you allow, I'd be glad to speak on what those numbers are and bring you the status.
I, I do know that right now, the budget we're working with, uh, for the, the proposed project as it stands right now, is like three million ninety-six thousand dollars and some odd change. So that's, that's the, and that's inclusive of your engineering, your grant preparation, your grant administration, contingency, construction contingency, and so forth. So, that's, that's the project we're working with right now.
Anything else? All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
The CDBG.
Yep. The next item on your agenda, the commissioners were brought, uh, by Commissioner Jordan, uh, Colleen and myself. An opportunity to apply for a contingency capacity building grant through CDBG, the Department of Commerce. We were actually awarded that grant, I think, a week or so ago. Uh, and we'll let Commissioner Jordan speak to exactly what the Housing Committee's planning on using it for, but we need to make a decision on who's gonna administer the grant, uh, today preferably. But I'll let Commissioner Jordan speak on what the grant's gonna be for.
Okay. All right, as you're aware, that we, the Housing Committee of Gates County, which addressing, addresses the housing needs of, uh, uh, citizens that are low income, disa- disabled, elderly, we've been addressing those needs over the last couple of years. And I think we have approximately forty recipients or more that we have helped, in doing such things as roof repairs, bathroom repairs, uh, floor repairs, just things that, uh, that need to be done to make a house safe. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to become aware of the one hundred thousand dollar grant that was offered through the Community Investment and Assistance Program, which comes under the CDBG, uh, of a hundred thousand dollars for projects that address housing needs. And, uh, from what I can see, is that one of the requirements of this grant was to identify how we intend to address housing needs and how we would plan, uh, to even expand addressing those needs in, in the out years. And so, we have a housing committee. We're in the process of addressing that. Uh, we have a housing coordinator. And we're just overjoyed that this one hundred thousand dollar grant was awarded to Gates County. And we think it's gonna be something that's gonna be a great, uh, benefit to the county, uh, in helping, uh, those that are in need, uh, with housing assistance as far as repairs. And so I would ask today that the board, we have to act on this within thirty days. It was approved on August the twenty-second, and we have to have it back into them by, uh, September the twenty-second. So, there's a lot of other things that we have to put in place, like, you know, what is our fair housing, uh, policy and all of that. But we have some, a little bit more extended time to do that, sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty days, so forth. So, uh, where we are today, we received the grant. Uh, I wanna commend Mike Scott for doing a great job in facilitating, submitting that, and, uh, following up on it so that it did come through. Uh, but now we need to approve or accept this grant, and the board signed it and submitted back to, uh, Community Investment, CIA if you will, uh, to let them know that we're moving forward.
Okay. Well, you want.
And I'll make that motion.
Make that as a motion that we received this grant that we applied for.
Okay.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
I want a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And Henry, you gonna be, you and Colleen will work with the committee to get all that stuff together, but Toby, right?
I'm one of the vice chairs of the Gates County Housing Committee. And we will be diligently working on our future plan, uh, and how to, uh, put this grant to, to work for the county. And also to be able to present a plan to, uh, CIA on, on what we're doing and, and what is our expected outcomes.
I think in addition to approving the grant, I think one thing we need to do is select an administrator of the grant.
Okay.
And I think there might be one sitting on the front row.
Well, if I could just comment on that, Mr. Chairman, what you, what you, what the board really needs to do in that regard, is you need to go out and do, uh, uh, public procurement for those services.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to work with County Manager's Office to put together all the proper, uh, proposals and the, and the advertising and so forth to make sure that the county meets all the statutory requirements, uh, required for CDBG procurement.
Okay. I think that's the thing to do, Toby, you'll.
Yeah, Diane's gonna make a note and I will take care of that.
Okay.
Just one point of clarification. We don't have to have that in place in order to accept it.
Absolutely not.
We can send it back.
Correct. We can set the grant today.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to add a note here. Henry's withholding some of his excitement about this.
He, he was a lot more excited when I called him on the phone that night.
And, um.
Praise the Lord.
And he is also withholding, uh, some credit. Henry, um, was excited about this from the minute he heard it. He did a lot of work and a lot of chatting with the county manager. They work very closely. And, and Mike helped us a great deal in this. You've already stated that, but, uh, what's taking place here is we are getting on the radar because we are making contact with individuals in Raleigh and other places that are, that are making us aware of, you're eligible for that money. And, um, and, and these things don't happen, I, I want the citizens to understand, they don't happen on their own. It's the relationships that we're building. Uh, it's the, the great service that we're getting from Mike Scott and, uh, and Toby keeping his eyes open and sharing these things with us. And, uh, Henry, thank you for your hard work on it. And I know that there's a lady out there, um, from DSS is, 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 that's excited as Henry is, I think, or maybe more.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly.
All right, thank, thank you, Colleen and Henry both for working with that and making this a successful project.
And that was all from me.
Okay. All right, the next thing on our agenda, Ken, you've got something you would like to talk about?
Um, I'd like to talk about our library again. Um, I spent a lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of time in the last thirty days and so considering what our actions are regarding the future of the Gates County Library. And I thought about it, and I've said from the beginning that we needed a library. And I still say that. Uh, the new library here in Gates County is for the citizens of Gates County. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we advise LS three P to con- conclude their design, move forward with the bid documents, and all other steps that are necessary to make this project move forward. This motion also includes instructions for the Finance Director to compose, release a request for proposals for the financing of the new Gates County Library. But I also want to put a cap on this library of not spending no more than one point five million. That is a gracious plenty. I feel like we can get it cheaper than that. And with the design that they have already, if they cannot, when the bids come in, that, uh, somebody with the architectural firms is gonna have to re- redo some things, redraw some things to keep it in that figure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
We, we've got a motion on the table?
Discussion.
Uh, we have a discussion?
I would like to say, um, if we can postpone here, I'll be glad to make a presentation to the public today with what I have that I, and, and I respect what Kenny says. Don't get me wrong. I made a motion last time to approve nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Nobody wanted to take on it. But there's some pertinent data out here and statistical data that shows what we're dealing with. We can ignore it or whatever. But I respectfully ask that we be presented to the public so that you can make your own determination, not after the fact. So, I don't have any problem with the motion, but let's wait until the October one if we're gonna do this. But I want the public to see, and it's gonna be seen, you can put me on the agenda for tonight meeting to make this presentation. But I am not moving forward on anything of any magnitude until it's weighed upon the public with your spending of your dollars. Absolutely not. Uh, I'm not trying to ramrod this thing or do it, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you, from a business perspective, as Mr. Green said some months ago, all the facts need to be on the table, and they are not on the table. Now, if we wanna postpone here for about a thirty minutes, I'll go get the equipment and we'll put it on the screen now. And we'll present it right here. I wasn't gonna do that, but I am gonna do it at the night meeting. So, we can do what we want to. Now, I had the motion of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar cap. That's what was presented in the paper to the public. And even those numbers are suspect with the usage factors and, and as was stated here, and it's rightly so. This is about things that are checked out of the library, DVDs, newspapers, books, et cetera. What a conventional library is being used for. It is not about people that generally walk into the library and use the computer or socialize or just read something. There are some statistics on that, and I'm one of those statistics that are on that paper. This is not fair to the citizens of Gates County. They need to be presented with the facts. If we don't wanna vote on it, don't want them to vote whether they want it or not, and we don't wanna survey anybody because, oh, they might not know what they really want. Now, don't insult the intelligence of the people out there. I mean, that, that's absolutely don't make sense. You're either for it or against it, or you, it's a good, sane business decision. But let's do it the right way. Let's don't shove it down somebody's throat. That's not the way you do things. You get all of the feedback, you get the input before you do things. We've already dispersed or committed to seventy-three thousand dollars that was unnecessary. Now, we also have several things. I read to you a letter last week about the town of Gates, a letter to Mr. Chappell here on April the fourteenth with their concerns about where it was being built at. I share those very same concerns. And I'm gonna go ahead and tell you this, and I'm gonna show it to you. So I'm gonna tell you the facts, and I'm gonna present them to you next time. There is only ten point one-two percent of the public in Gates County on average that has used a library in the last two years. Eight hundred and forty-five people on average went into the library and checked out a book or something. Eight hundred and forty-five, ten point one-two percent of the people in Gates County, I mean of the voters in Gates County. And I found out last night, my number's a little low. I was using eighty-three fifty. They told me it's eighty-six fifty. So, even that number is high now. There are, there are seven hundred and three people that have registered in the library. And once they registered, never went back. Now, these are dispersed over ten years. There are, right now, as we, we speak, those eight hundred and forty-five people made, uh, in a two-year average was fifty-six thousand transactions. Around roughly twenty-eight thousand transactions a year. So in other words, twenty-eight thousand books. It came to our current operating expense, three dollars and twelve cents for every transaction. We spent a hundred and four dollars per person. There is four thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight cardholders that have a barcode. Seven hundred and three never went back. There is four, four thousand five hundred and ninety-nine people that are Gates County residents that hold a card. Only forty-one hundred and ninety-five of those people have actually ever been to the library after they got the card. That's it. Now, Burt T. County has a library with four thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet. And Mr. Hamelaw, you might correct me today. You went and got it. I'm basing on my memory, but I'm pretty close. I think I remember that one exactly, forty-one thirty-two. Hereford County, five thousand. Six thousand in Northampton County, and we want an eighty-one hundred square foot. The average square foot per person for that library is point one-nine to point two-two. Ours, point six-six. Square feet per person now. Hereford County, Northampton County, and Burt T. County have over twenty thousand people in their county. We have twelve thousand one ninety-seven based on the two thousand and ten census. And I can't remember the dollar cost in my head right now. That's on the screens. But, think about it. If only ten point one-two percent of the voters are actually using the library, does the eighty-twenty rule apply here? Does it? That don't make sense. Now, if you the citizen, and it's your tax dollar, stand up and say yes to what you want, yeah, let's go. Right behind you. But you have the right to decide, not me. I will not spend your tax dollars unwisely. I will not.
Okay, we've got.
In all, in all respect, my granddaughter, my wife brings her to the library, and I appreciate that dearly. I love my granddaughter very much. We deserve a library. We need a library. But there are some other options to do this, and there are economical options. We've got a courthouse sitting across the road here that we have got to do something about. One way or the other, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna tear it down? Are we gonna renovate it? What are we gonna do? The citizens need to be involved in this too. But, I tell you this, you can get grant money for that a lot easier than you can a library. And that's something about me, about this, is I'm very passionate about doing the right thing. I love my county. But I tell you what, this does not make viable sense the, the way we're approaching it today. Absolutely not. We started at nine seventy-five, and it has ballooned to one point seven. You know what my boss man would do to me if I had a capital job that started out locked down?
Probably close down IP.
Yes, he would. You know what he would do to me when he came and audited my returns on my, my investment? You know what he would do to me when he came and audited my returns on my, my investment? I probably wouldn't have a job. And it don't, it don't make good sense. It really doesn't. We need to do something with our library. We have a problem here. But it is a wise solution to do that, the town of Gatesville. Matter of fact, there's a lot of, I've already talked to a gentleman, Mr. Olds is dedicated, and that's part of the selling thing, two point, two, two and a half acres? Is that right?
Yeah, three.
All right. Now, I've already talked to an individual, would you be willing to, to, regardless of what we do, you dedicate that, that land, correct? For a library or whatever? For anything that's going on-
Well, gentlemen, we're not gonna get into a back and forth thing here. You make your comment, Johnny, and then we'll move forward.
There is an individual, whatever, right here in Gatesville, very close, that would be willing to trade some land for that land. Would that be advisable to you? Commercial basis?
I've got orders, I have to talk to that gentleman.
Okay, well, I'm just throwing that on the table.
All right, Johnny, you finish your comments?
I got a couple more things.
All right, go ahead.
Like I said, uh, let's adjourn about thirty-five, forty minutes, and I'll put it on the screen for you.
We, we don't need to do that, we're waiting for next month, you, you're, you're, you're suffering. Be here next month, and at that point, it will be.
Let, let me just, let me make a comment.
Henry?
First of all, we have to do something.
That's right.
And I want the citizens of Gates County to understand that we have to do something about a library. We're gonna do something.
That's correct.
But to move forward today, uh, we requested in the last meeting, have sixty days, uh-
Ninety days.
Ninety days grace period to, to, uh, put something together and, and, uh, be able to decide what we really wanna do.
And we voted on it.
Yeah, and, well, I think it's a little premature because we haven't discussed anything. We haven't discussed options, we haven't discussed anything that, uh, we can use as an alternative or just how we wanna approach it. So, I'm not in favor of going forward with a motion on one point five million. I don't know whether one point seven million, one point five, or nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the correct number. We don't know what that number's gonna, gonna be, or if there's something else that we need to do. But we need to have the time to, at the next meeting, uh, we're gonna have some presentations of, of where we are, uh, what are some other possibilities, and, and just be able to discuss that, and at that time, I think we can move forward and decide where we wanna go. Do we wanna go, uh, and solicit the, the citizens to get their input? It doesn't mean that we have to do what that says. The commissioners have the authority to build a library, even if the citizen says, no, we don't think we wanna do it. But certainly, it gives the citizens the opportunity to, uh, express themselves, and if those numbers come in that way, we would certainly want to try to make sure that we did something that the majority, uh, was satisfied with. But I think at this time, uh, I would not be for moving forward on a motion without having some kind of, uh, discussions on what's gonna be the best approach to satisfy the library needs of the county. But I do wanna close with, we're gonna do something for the library.
Amen.
That's not, that's not the issue. But whether the one point seven million or one point five million is what we do, uh, I'm not sure that's, that's where we are right now.
All right, Jack, you want to speak?
Well, first of all, I wanna, uh, I wanna note that the five commissioners up here, all five commissioners are saying that they are for a library. Commissioners are saying that we are gonna do something. Commissioners, all five commissioners are saying, we need a library. What is at question is how we go about it. You know, I stated earlier that, that we solicited the professionals that build libraries. We solicited our staff, our library staff, for their input. We came up with a number. We haven't broke ground on the library yet, but we have to take the steps to get these bids out so that we'll know whether the number is one point three or one point five. Kenny has made a motion to suggest one point five as a cap. When that stuff comes in, we don't have to accept that. While that's going on, while those bids are being solicited, that is the time for the citizens to come to that podium and speak. And when the lady comes back to present with, uh, to us the bids and what the, the final numbers have come in at, then we may say, okay, so we're, we're not gonna build a eight thousand one hundred square foot library, we're gonna build this size library because this meets the numbers of the budget that we feel good about. Kenny has made a motion. At the end of these comments, I'm going to second his motion, uh, to move forward, and my purpose is so that we can get the bidding process, uh, moving, so that we can get, be closer to the beginning of project, project, and I hope that, uh, the number that we'll come in with will satisfy the citizens and the finished product will satisfy them as well. At this time, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Got another question.
All right, question, Johnny.
Why would you waste someone's time and move forward with a bidding process when you haven't established the real groundwork then? Why would you do that? Why would you move forward, Jack, with saying, I want bids on eighty-one hundred square feet? Why would you do that? And waste someone's time? Now, I don't know whether it's gonna cost any money or not, but why would we waste people's time until we establish and everyone was in total agreement up here as to what we wanted? Why would you do that?
Well, that, that-
These are professional people that you're dealing with.
But let me ask, let me answer the question. That is part of the information, that's part of the, the missing, one of the missing pieces to the puzzle. We, we really, we really should, uh, should go through that process so that we'll know what it's gonna cost for the parking lot, so that we'll know what it's gonna cost for the heating and air and the construction and all of those items. So, when we get that information, then we can design, redesign the building if need be.
Well, we had, you know, she presented those numbers on paper, Jack.
Let me, let me ask this question, I'll say-
Okay, ask no question, Henry.
If we cap it at one point five, they've already designed it for one point seven million dollars, and I keep hearing eight thousand square feet. The proposal that, uh, L S three P has given us is eleven thousand. I don't know where we get-
No, eight, eight thousand.
It was eighty-one hundred, eighty-one hundred.
Okay, for the one point seven million. So, if we cap it at one point five, they're gonna, they're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and, and redesign it.
If y'all-
I mean, how are we gonna bid on something that we're capping?
If you look at your bidding documents, the base bid was one point three, if I remember right.
Right.
The base bid for the project.
To be clear about that, the one point seven-
I think it's one point six, eight three.
It's one point six, eight three.
That's right.
But that is with, that is with like three or four options that we haven't agreed to. It, the, the base, uh, price is in the neighborhood of one point three six five, something like that. But we've jumped on this one point seven, that's on the last page, and those are options that we, you know, we haven't agreed to. So, you know, I've been quiet about the one point seven.
So, which options were they?
I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear about that.
What options were they?
Um, metal roof, I believe, was one of them.
That was in addition to.
Well, I, I don't have the document in front of me, so I don't even have to do that exactly.
One, one, one point six, one million six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is what it came with a hundred and twenty on the furniture side. That was fifty-five more thousand dollars if we were gonna brick it. Two hundred and forty more thousand dollars if we wanted geothermal. And I don't remember what the metal number was right off the top of my head, but it was about a hundred.
The base, the base bid was, the one point seven was a budgeted number.
Well, that's what, that's what they had in the paper, the documents.
We've got a, a motion on the floor and a second, we're gonna have to act on that. Uh, we'll take this by a show of hands, 'cause I'm sure this is gonna be issued. No, no, sir, we're not. Um, all right, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, right hand. All right, motion carries. All right, the next thing on the agenda. Gus, you're, you're here.
Hey, Gus, how you doing today?
Good morning, Chairman.
Morning, Commissioner.
All right.
I, I appreciate the opportunity.
Afternoon.
I appreciate the opportunity to come for you today, and I'm here at your request, uh, to provide an update on, uh, where the county stands with respect to its sewer project. Uh, and really, what I'd like to do is I'd like to break that project into two parts and sort of give you two updates because you, you really have two distinct projects going on. Uh, one is the sewer collection system, and the other is the wastewater treatment plant. Um, let me start by bringing, uh, you back up to speed on, on where we are in the process. As, as you may recall, we started some time ago on what we described to be a fairly long road of, of things that you have to accomplish to ultimately be able to receive and treat, um, sanitary sewer, uh, here in the county. Uh, we started that process some time ago with a feasibility study, uh, which you folks participated in, and several of the county's, uh, citizens participated in through, uh, public meetings and, and providing their opinion through surveys that we, we collected. And, uh, once we completed the feasibility study, the county identified that there is an economic development project, uh, that was worthy of sewage. Um, at that point in time, uh, the county, uh, requested proposals, uh, from, from firms and professionals to proceed with the design and development of a sanitary sewer system, and, and we were fortunate enough to be selected by the county, which we appreciate. We've enjoyed, uh, developing a working relationship with the county. Um, subsequent to that, we began the design process, uh, and we really broke your project up into, um, two separate pieces. Uh, again, we're, we're dealing with, uh, sanitary sewer collection separate from wastewater treatment. The reason being is the county has a wastewater treatment asset, uh, in hand. You do not have a collection system a- asset that could be expanded to serve your economic development area. To begin that whole process, uh, you had to put forth, uh, an environmental assessment, uh, to twenty-six plus state agencies, state and federal agencies, uh, to review your intent to provide sanitary sewer treatment and collection. Uh, and those agencies came back, uh, after a, um, a, an intensive and scrutiny review and issued what's referred to as a finding of no significant impact. Uh, significant is the, the word that I'm gonna underscore there, 'cause that is actually the most significant accomplishment that you've had to date, uh, because what that, what that document does is it states that the, um, the agencies that are, uh, in charge of managing our state's and federal natural and cultural resources have reviewed your project and determined that the, um, the impacts, potential impacts of providing sanitary sewer to the area, um, are considered to not have, not have any significant negative impacts. In other words, those agencies have reviewed your, your project and your program and found it to be a, a, a worthy project, uh, and, and not, uh, an issue that they would, uh, take contention with. Um, that project, I, I'm gonna get to, uh, Commissioner's comment about the five point two number. Uh, where the five point two number comes in is, uh, the county had the foresight, um, early on in the project to say, we have the opportunity for this, uh, sanitary sewer system to expand, uh, and serve other areas, um, other, uh, customers. So, we would like to take as large a, a reasonable bite of the elephant up front with our environmental approval as possible. Uh, I believe the five point two number that, uh, uh, has been, uh, discussed is associated with a phase two project, which would be expansion of your wastewater treatment facility beyond the current identified need. Uh, it would require expansion of your treated effluent disposal beyond any land or system that's been identified. Uh, would also, uh, require the extension of your sanitary sewer collection to areas that have thus yet been identified. So, uh, we, we got the environmental approval to carry you to a much larger system than what you're currently planned on doing, also, uh, much larger than what you currently have funding allocated for through yourself and the funding agencies that are participating in the project. Going back to where you stand on your sanitary sewer collection system, 'cause that's really, uh, step number one, uh, because again, you have a treatment facility with some capacity. So, the first, uh, viable step for the county to take is to extend your sanitary sewer collection system. Uh, we've completed the design of that system, uh, we submitted that design for review and approval by the Division of Water Quality, and you received that approval. Uh, so our, our state has permitted you to move forward with the construction and operation of that sanitary sewer collection system. Uh, we're still awaiting a couple of other permits that go along with that, primarily, uh, permission from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to install pipes within their right of way. Uh, we anticipate that coming in the next few days. All of your other permits and entitlements are in place, uh, to move forward with the collection system. Uh, as far as the wastewater treatment facility goes, we, uh, have also completed the design of that phase one treatment facility, uh, which, uh, includes fifty thousand gallons per day of initial capacity, uh, treatment capacity. Uh, we have begun the permit application process, uh, over the next several months. Uh, you will be engaged in obtaining, uh, several permits from state and federal agencies to go to construction and operation on that wastewater treatment facility. Um, in the meantime, we have distributed the, uh, the preliminary plans, uh, to several manufacturers and distributors of the equipment to seek their conformance that you have a multitude of options. In other words, that would create competition in the provision of the, uh, the equipment that's required to build that facility. We believe that'll help you get, uh, the best price on bid day, uh, when we do that. Um, so, that was a very brief update on, on where we are in the process. I'd, I'd like to pause for a moment and ask if you have any questions about where we are or the process, and then I have another item or two that I need to bring to your attention.
Uh, yes, Gus. Uh, one of the concerns that we've had, uh, in the last several meetings is, uh, where do we stand as far as being able to connect the businesses that are coming up, specifically the credit union, with our current, uh, wastewater facility capacity? Now, we know that we're not gonna be, uh, at the fifty thousand gallons in probably a couple of years, but as we stand right now, we have to put in a pump station, we have to put some lines in, uh, and be able to, be able to connect to our existing capacity. Where do we stand? Uh, can you give us some timeline on when the credit union can expect to, uh, to be hooked up to what we have right now?
Yes, sir. It's a great question. Um, a, a few minutes ago, I stated that your sewer collection system has been permitted. Uh, and that collection system permit includes not only the current flows that are going to your existing wastewater treatment asset, but inclusive of, uh, businesses that have been identified that will come online in the very near future. The credit union's one of those businesses. So, uh, the Division of Water Quality has reviewed that application and approved that and issued that back to the county. Um, the design of the sewer, sewer collection system is such that, um, the credit union can be connected to that system, uh, once constructed. Uh, so really, as far as the timeframe goes, as soon as, uh, you have the remaining permit documents in hand, uh, and we, uh, obtain, uh, any remaining, uh, funding agency approvals to go to construction, you would then be able to bid and construct the project. And we would, would see that entire process happening within an eight to a nine month ti- time period.
Okay. That would include-
Eight to nine.
That would include the bidding, uh, in, in that eight to nine months?
Yes, sir. Typically, the, the bidding and bid review, advertisement bidding and, and review process takes forty-five to sixty days of that period.
Gus, just to clarify something, eight to nine months was for building something, but for, using the State Employees Credit Union as an example, if they needed to come online next week, they could tap into the system and come online next week.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry if I'm-
I think that might have been a Commissioner doing the question.
I, I'm sorry if I misunderstood the question, that's exactly right.
Well, in order to do that, we're gonna have to put a pump station in, we're gonna have to run some lines into the project.
Right.
Uh, and obviously, that's gonna take some time.
He was, he was, he's already at the road, he would just come to the pipe, which is- Is there a time, say, say, the, 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 the State Credit Union was ready today to hook up, at what, how, how long would it take us to get them hooked up to that system and have it working?
Right. That, uh, actually doesn't require a state permit because there would just be a sewer customer to your existing facility. Uh, so all that would be required is the time to order and receive the materials and have it installed. And so, you're typically talking a six to eight week lead time on your pump station, probably thirty days worth of construction work or so to get the pipe in, the electrical, everything that would be needed.
I guess, uh, Jonathan, uh, if you're privy to, uh, give us this information, do you have any expected completion dates?
I'm not privy to discuss that.
Okay. All right.
So, you do have, and, and that's a great point, uh, Mr. Chappell, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager, for bringing that up. Um, you, you instructed us throughout this process to ensure that you had contingencies in place to bring customers on, um, as soon as they're ready, and, and we've certainly held that as a, as a, as a primary goal for the project. And so, you have the ability, um, uh, to a, to a certain extent, uh, to connect any of those customers, uh, uh, very quickly because you have some, some capacity that's unused in your existing plant, and you do have a force main along the highway that they can connect to. So, you have the ability to bring on customers immediately, notwithstanding the time it takes to, to put in whatever improvements to physically connect them to the pipe.
But that, that in itself is a problem area, Gus, if I've, as I have sent you on what our revenue- As I have sent you on what our revenue stream is that you and Toby gave me the numbers back and the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar op, and I believe that, is that a good number, the hundred and seventy-five thousand operational cost?
Honestly, I can't remember, so I'll defer to your number.
But that's the number you guys gave me, is that reasonable?
Again, I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me. If that's the number I gave you, then yes sir, that's a reasonable number.
And the hookups. So, and the original wastewater feasibility study in Kavanaugh, it said that it was not feasible in Gates County. That's what it says.
No, let's be specific here. No, it said it's not feasible for the entire county.
That is correct.
Not in Gates County.
That is correct.
Let's be accurate.
Then Toby, when you address that then and you look at those revenue streams and they came out with a negative one point four percent and Gus's number's even done that way, how many, eight years? I believe it was eight years when it turned positive, right?
Again, I defer to your memory's better than mine, sir. I don't have the report in front of me.
I do remember the number's pretty good, but anyhow, I think that's about right. So, in this meantime, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars operational cost and the real thing about this is how well it develops and the tax stream comes into the tax base. That's going to be critical. But if not, the number you put on the screen with the water for customers, and that's what that number was, the thirty-nine hundred and forty, let's be open and honest with the citizens of Gates County, that the water customers are going to bear the burden of this bill. Is that not true?
The utility customers, so the water and sewer customers are all in the same enterprise.
So all of this water customers are going to bear the burden of this operational cost?
The, again, the, all of the utility enterprise, which includes your water and your sewer customers, you've established a sewer rate structure to generate the revenue to offset the operational costs of the sewer.
It would be like a lawyer, Gus. Yes and no. All of the water customers in Gates County will bear a burden in the enterprise fund.
I think what he's trying to say, and obviously you're not grasping, is there aren't water and sewer customers, they're all one now. It is a utility fund, is what he's trying to tell you. So to say water customers and sewer customers is not accurate.
So we're going to put them all in one fold?
Correct.
So all of them are going to pay then, right?
That's what he's telling you, they're utility customers.
So all of the utility customers in Gates County will be paying for this two mile radius?
Yes, that's what he's telling you.
That's all I wanted you to say is yes.
It's taken five minutes for him to say the same thing, yes. Can I add one clarification?
And that is not conveyed to the public that all of them are going to have to pay for this.
Can I add a clarification to that? And I'm trying to be helpful, so I appreciate the continued questions because they are helping me understand, you know, the questions that you're asking. Your water customers will continue to pay a water bill. Your water and sewer customers will pay a water and sewer bill. And those two enterprises are set up based on the rate model that was developed to self-fund.
That's right, zero balance, or self-funded capital, incurring capital cost.
But the thing about it is, now, we're talking operational cost.
That's right.
The cost to put up the facility, we're talking grant money that we're receiving. But when you look at operational cost, you have to think about the fact that we already have a sewer system. Who's paying that now? The utility company, we're paying it. The citizens are paying for the sewage facility that we have to support the high school, community center, and so forth. So we've already got a sewer system. That operational cost is going to have to be broken down and applied to what we're already spending. It's not going to cost the county to bring on new customers, it's going to cost something, but we're going to pay those operational costs right now because we have the system.
That's correct.
It's not like that we don't have a system, we're adding, we're expanding the system. So when we talk about a hundred and seventy-six thousand operational cost, it's going to probably cost us just about that if we didn't do anything. If we did nothing right now, we have to have someone to keep that plant serviced, maintained, monitored, and whatever. That's going to have to happen. So, you know, there's going to be some added cost, but it's not the citizens bearing costs that they're not already bearing.
And also, as far as your projected revenue streams, we are conservative with the projection of expenses. In other words, you incur a year's worth of expenses no matter where you are in that year versus, you know, as your system is coming online, you have less revenues and you have less expenses. In other words, it doesn't, you don't pay the full amount to operate that system every year if you don't have a full number of customers, you pay some portion of that, just like you get a portion of the revenue. So, again, I believe the, again, I don't have the rate model in front of me and I apologize for not having that model in front of me to speak to you today, I didn't understand that we were going to go into that in detail and I apologize for that. But I believe the, you know, we treated the expenses and revenues on an annual basis. So we projected a conservative expense number to make sure that you had sufficient revenues to cover those expenses and contribute to your reserve funds.
So how are we going to be conservative on our expense side? It's going to be what it is, isn't it, Gus?
You have certain expenses that-
I mean, they're sunk costs to a certain extent.
You have cer-
Are they going to be semi-viable?
You have certain expenses that you will pay no matter how many customers are there and fixed cost. And you have certain expenses such as electricity and expendables and certain minor equipment, certain chemicals, things of that nature, that you consume at a greater rate based on a greater flow or a greater number of customers.
They're semi-viable expenses related on the capacity flow. And I understand that. It's, the only thing I wanted to bring out of this whole thing is that exactly what Toby said, now we've become a utility fund and everyone pays.
Gus, did we ever intend or expect any magical thing for this to all start off as a project that would be making money up front? I mean, that wasn't ever brought, never started that idea.
Well, you folks have been-
magically, we would be making money as soon as we turned it on, right?
Well, you folks have been very fortunate to receive a great deal of grant funds, as was described previously, which helps you tremendously expedite the return rate on your investment in your utility.
And that is the good thing, Gus. This is the only thing that concerns me about it, is when someone gives me something, when my dad gave me an allowance, he came to me and asked me, "What did you do with it, son?"
You still got it, right?
Not all the time.
Just kidding.
But that's what really concerns, and I heard what you said at the first of the thing. So I really am very curious as to the people that reviewed this and said, "Hey, this is a great thing," which it is. It has the potential to be a good thing. And the reason it is, is because of the grant dollars. But if we don't do a good job of executing that and can't on Mr. Olds to do his part, we're in big trouble. Big trouble.
But the other option is doing nothing, right?
That's true.
Well, one of the, John is talking about good points. The grant money is certainly the thing that makes it viable. It's certainly the thing that allows us to expedite and move forward, which I'm excited about growth. But one point hadn't been mentioned is there are some businesses outside of the State Employees Credit Union, there are some businesses that are going to come, they're going to generate jobs, and they're going to generate revenue. And they're going to bring, we're going to be able to dismiss in a few years, we're going to be able to dismiss the cliche comment that Gates County doesn't have anything. We're going to be able to remove that. We're going to be able to remove that tag because you're not going to be able to say that any longer. We've got those businesses out there generating jobs and generating revenue, so.
The only thing wrong with that, Jack, is this analogy. Dollar General and Family Dollar, they didn't consider this, why not? Why did they not consider that was a viable thing for them? Why did they choose where they chose? It's all about traffic patterns and flows and availability of people.
Well, for the name brand restaurants and people like that, it's not about just traffic flow, it's about cluster development too. And that's a good thing.
I think it might be a little presumptuous for any of us at this table to decide why Dollar General put their business where they put it. That would be for Dollar General to decide.
Well, I can tell you why.
You know where, you know why Dollar General made their business decision?
I'm just glad they came.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, let's, anything else from Gus on the source of questions on this that we can go ahead and move forward?
Chairman, I do have one or two other items I'd like to bring forward to you. When you begin providing utilities for the public, you begin generally with a feasibility study and master plan, county did. The great thing about that is as businesses come and as folks are attracted to that area because the presence of those utilities makes the development of those sites more viable, you begin to have different scenarios that come to fruition. And one of those has come forth that I wanted to bring to your attention and ask for your guidance on. As you may recall, the master plan for your sewer project included the economic development project plus a few thousand feet of sewer extension to the west and the east. And that extension of utility was, again, to provide for utilities for that area to continue to expand and grow. Since the creation of the master plan, some of the businesses that are being located within the project itself are just beyond the reach of the master plan sewer project. In other words, based on the site and the topography and what makes a reasonable sense from an engineering perspective, your master plan included providing the sewer utility to, let's say, the front half of the property that the economic development project is going on. And there are a few businesses now who have identified some areas in the back half that make more sense to them for reasons unknown to us. But regardless, those folks are certainly very interested in participating into, in your sewer utility as they come to develop their business in the county. So a scenario that I wanted to bring to your attention and ask for your guidance on is working within the constraints of your existing budget. If you would like to extend sewer service to those folks who have been identified to be coming to certain areas of land, perhaps we could reduce the sewer extension to the east and the west by a comparable amount where no businesses have presently been identified, but we were facilitating for that growth in the future to provide for serving a need on a short-term and identified basis. So in other words, a scenario that I would like for you to consider is rather than extending sewer to the east of the economic development area, perhaps reinvesting a portion of those funds to extend sewer further within the economic development project itself to reach more businesses that have been identified as wishing to come to that site more immediately.
Do you have this?
Okay, great. Well, that's fantastic. If you have a, I always carry bigger sheets of paper with me, by the way, so there's a, if you have that map in front of you, you will notice along the highway some black and green lines, simply put, that represent the project that was approved and the project that's been put forth and permitted. What we're asking you to consider is to reallocate some of the sewer extension from the right-hand side of your sheet of paper to the area that's identified by the light blue towards the north of Sony Lane.
And that would be to take, taking the assisted care facility in, would be coming in, is that right? I mean-
Well, there've been a number of businesses that have been identified that are looking to extend further back into areas that were more difficult to reach by the project when it was originally conceptualized. So what you would be doing is reducing the sewer that's being extended to an area that presently has no customers identified for immediate connection and reallocating that same distance of sewer or maybe a minor adjustment of that to an area where some other businesses have been identified.
So what you're talking about is considering making a better use, excuse me, what you're talking about is considering making a better use of our installation to where we have people that have shown that they're probably coming and maybe a little more saturation of usage.
That's correct. And again, these are very typical when you begin with the extension or creation of a utility in an area. The old saying from the movie, "If you build it, they'll come," to some extent plays out from the standpoint of when a utility is available, it facilitates the ability for businesses to locate in an area or other potential customers to locate in an area. And to get started, you have a concept plan of these are the areas we would like to serve. Over the course of time, as customers develop in any given area, you will need to continue to adjust what areas you serve. Said differently, I'm likely going to have this discussion with you again in the future because you may have a yet unidentified customer that wishes to come on in a different area and we need to figure out how to serve them to continue with your goal of promoting economic development.
I guess the bottom line is what you're asking today is that in order to allow you to work within the current budget, to give you the flexibility to be able to shift your focus on the area that's identified with a current need.
Yes sir.
In other words, without us having to readjust the budget and whatever, we can come back later and talk about going back and establishing service to those potential sites that we think will come later.
Yes sir.
So we're just talking about working within the budget that we have and just doing it a little differently, allowing you to make those adjustments.
Yes sir.
And from, looking at the blue line, is there no new permitting involved?
It would require a permit modification, but that's a three week or so turnaround, right? Once you get the initial permit, the modifications are much simpler and much, generally speaking, quicker return.
So Gus, what you're saying is taking the green line and replacing it with the blue line?
The green line to the right, yes sir.
So, this is on private property?
It presently is. I'm not sure whether that road is dedicated to public or not.
Why don't we just drop the green line and ask Mr. Olds to do the blue line?
Certainly, certainly up to the Commissioners.
I mean, that's his property name. Yeah, we want the businesses there, but that's Mr. Olds's responsibility, not the county's.
If, if, that's-
That's not a public road, it's a private road.
Yes sir, and that's certainly an option to consider. If the county were to decide to do that, I would ask to not reduce the green line.
I'd like for you to go down here to my employer down the road here and I would like for you to put a line down there for me. My employer. He would be very interested in this at tax-free basis.
This road, this will become a state road and the sewer system will be owned by the county at the end of the process anyway.
The sewer system is a public utility, just like your water system. It's owned by the county.
And the grant funding is designed for that side of the road. I don't see a problem with it, it seems like the smart thing to do.
Yeah, for Mr. Olds to do.
It's a smart thing for the county to do too.
In what respect?
Because we're trying to grow the county, we've got businesses interested in doing this. That's what the job is about, not about what Mr. Olds wants, what the county needs.
And you addressed that from a different approach.
All right. What do you need from us for this? Just the approval to do this?
Well, what I would like to get from the county is if you choose to say, "Yes, this makes sense, we'd like you to proceed forward," then we need to go back and ensure that all the agencies and the funding agencies are also in agreement with that. So we didn't want to do that without your permission. If you say, "Let's proceed forward," then we will go back to those agencies and ensure there are no additional questions that those folks have. If they have no questions, then we will come back to you and say, "Let's do a permit modification and add that area."
You see, you see any problem with that, Mike?
I don't, because you've got so many agencies involved. I know EDA wants to stay out on the right of way, I know they do want to do that, but with the rural center.
The rural center was designed for the park.
And by the way, we would not rescind your permit for the green line. You've got that in hand and that's great. We would just be simply by modification adding the blue line if you choose to direct us to do that.
Gus, I think that's fine, but I'm not in favor of the county doing something on private property. That justifies all reason. You know, you're setting the precedent here that for any business coming in the county, you better be ready to step up to the plate. It's not fair to treat one different than you treat another.
Well, in reality-
We had a man out there on thirteen that wanted to put a machine business out there and employ twelve people and we gave him a hard time about that. That don't make sense. I mean, and I agree with what you're saying, from a practicality standpoint, that's true, but it's not the county's responsibility.
Well, all utilities run on private land.
No, they don't.
Yeah, they run on private land.
With a right of way.
The water that runs to my house runs on my land. And if I had sewer, it would run on my land to get to my house. So this is just a matter of developing an area- It, it, this is just a matter of developing an area for the good of the county because the citizens want these businesses and they also want the revenue. So it's just, it's just a good thing to do to, to bring those two things to realization.
So you think it would be a good thing then, uh, Jack, if Mr. Cox was to ask for the candidate to put in his water line to the, down to the plant, you think that would be a good viable reason?
Would be, would Mr. Cox be willing to build his, move his mill down here to the area where the sewer was?
Build a what?
Move his mill down here to sewer area.
I'm not talking about it. I'm talking about the water line. Water line, not, not sewer.
It's not a water line goes back to the mill?
No, it is not. Matter of fact, the county some years ago, uh, refused to do that. This is the, this is the largest taxpayer in Gates County. He's the largest employer other than the county in Gates County. Gates Custom Milling down the road here isn't one of the other people. Why, why, you know, what's good for one is good for all. We all want things, but there is a fair way of doing things. Someone has to bear the responsibility and be accountable.
I think, I think what was established is what Graham has said before, that this road is gonna be a public road. And the utilities are being offered down this area when it comes to connection, each individual business will be responsible for connecting to the sewer system. Uh, so what we're doing is basically we're making it accessible, uh, in the public areas of, 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 that's gonna be turned over to, to.
And that's a good thing, Henry. I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm talking about whose responsibility is it?
Well, there, there.
What, what kind of money are we talking about here, Gus? What's the distribution difference of the total impact?
Well, again, I, I asked for your permission to do this within your existing budget, so we, we would look at doing a, a, a fair swap, uh, so to speak, or an even swap.
So can, but can you put a dollar number on it for me? I know it's, uh, what? How much is it a mile, but?
It, it's, uh, about, on average, it's about fifty dollars a foot is a good number to use.
Fifty a foot, five, twenty, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile.
So we're, uh, you know, again, we're asking to not extend your budget, not add cost to the approved project, but simply to, to move lines from one area to another.
So what, what length is this?
And you're talking about five hundred feet, right? Let's be clear. You're talking in miles, but we're talking five hundred feet.
Now, so I want to know, so it's five hundred feet.
I, I'd like to say something. I'd like to say something. On the piece of paper in front of you, the picture of the plot.
Yes, sir.
Down in the, the right-hand corner, it says, "The, the green line extends approximately eighteen hundred lineal feet beyond track two."
Eighteen hundred feet.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen hundred feet, all right? Up here, in the middle of the picture, where the blue line is drawn, it says, "We're gonna extend it five hundred feet." So you're gonna take five hundred feet from this eighteen hundred, and all you're gonna do is move it back here on the back. The cost is gonna be the same to put in, whether you put it down the side of the road or you put it back there.
It may be less.
The, the difference, the difference is the eighteen hundred feet goes nowhere and the five hundred feet goes to businesses that are located here.
Right. The eighteen hundred feet goes to twelve hundred, that nobody is, is probably gonna be on, but yet you're gonna put tw- five hundred feet down here at the same cost where you're gonna put a business on.
And, and let me share with you, it.
So, can I ask you this? Well, the black lines here, is the county spending the money to put these black lines on the paper?
Uh, the black lines, uh, are part of the economic development grant that was received by the county.
The black line is.
So all of these black lines are being done on county, uh, grant appropriated money?
Yes.
And how many total feet is that? Let's see, that's eighteen over here.
Well, let, let me explain to you, I think before you, before you came on, we had a discussion with Kim Olds, uh, the developer, on consolidating the grant requests. So we took on all the grants with the understanding that we would run the lines within the project. So if we had split it up and just did the county side, it would have been, uh, probably less likely that we would have been successful in getting the grants. But by con- consolidating them, we were able to take on the whole project with the grant funds and, and, uh, the resources that they're gonna provide. So, uh, this was a business decision that, uh, was, was viable for that particular time. Uh, if you had not done it this way, then you would have had them doing one half, we doing the other half, but both going to the same grant request, and then we'd had to split the jobs up. There was a lot of things involved that we really didn't need to get into.
So do you remember what the differential was, Henry, between the two?
I, I don't remember what the differential was.
Even more so to Commissioner Jordan's point, when you start splitting it up, you have Kim with an engineer and a, doing work, us with an engineer doing work, and they may or may not be the same person, and you have engineers trying to make two pieces fit when you could have one engineer doing all the work.
Yeah, that was.
It's the county's, it's the county's utility anyway.
The reasoning behind it was to get the county in charge and then get it done. So the county would take ownership and it would be done at county specs with the county's engineer. That's why it was done. The funding would have been, come from our rural center to do this. It would have been done, but somebody else would have been controlling it. Somebody else would have been running it. And then it would have been turned over to us for however it was built. We wanted to have ownership in it and to, to make sure it was built to match what we had on the other side. And that we would, when we took ownership, it would be ours. It would, the funding would have been the same, the same type funding. It was all the rural center money that was gonna do it.
Well, I, I don't have any problem with it. It's just a perception that it sends out to the general public.
Well, let's, let's take this as a motion that we allow, um, Gus and, um, Kavanaugh to, to make the adjustments that they need to, uh, to do this. Do I have a motion to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow Kavanaugh to make the adjustments in the distribution of sewer line to accommodate the identified businesses, uh, within the current budget from the, uh, extension that was not gonna be currently served.
I second that.
Well, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay, Gus.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions from you or the commissioners?
When, when, when can we get, will we be getting started on this? Do you have any idea where we can go ahead and, I mean, this project will start being, have you got any projection on that yet?
Very soon. We have just a, a couple of, of minor permits that we need to, to have receipt before we advertise and, uh, again, just do a, a final check with the funding agency if they're ready. But you're, uh, you're certainly within a matter of weeks, not months at this point.
Okay.
Bye.
So we can expect to see some, some work being moved? We can expect to see something start moving?
Yes, sir. I have a shovel on the car, so.
Gus, would you go back and review the operational cost? And I'd like for you to give me a, like a ten-year operational cost with inflationary figures that you think Mike would be in that. That's realistic, if you would, and email that to me.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to do that. Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Gus.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gus.
All right, the next one on our agenda, we're going to the new business. Uh, the first thing on the agenda is Nancy Easterly from Albemarle Hospital. Hello there, Mrs. E- Easterly. How are you?
I'm great. Thanks for, uh.
Mr. Day. Oh, well, it is a D and I'm sorry.
It's, it's Easter Day, but that's an unusual name, so.
Did you bring any bunnies?
Um, I've heard a few of those jokes in my past, for sure. Um, I'm Nancy Easterly. I work with Albemarle Hospital, and I'm the director of the Gates County Medical Center, and I'd like to thank Mr. Chapel and the commissioners for inviting me to share some great news for the community. You've been talking about several grants this morning, and I've learned a lot. Uh, over a year ago, the county commissioners and Mr. Chapel wrote a letter of support for Albemarle Hospital to apply for a grant for Gates County Medical Center and, um, um, also services in Chauan and Proquemans County to become federally qualified health centers. And after a lot of community and planning and engagement and support from the Gates County community, we were notified at the first of August that we were, we did receive funding. We were only two in the state of North Carolina and only seven in the entire southeast region of the United States. So I think that's a tribute to the partnership and the collaboration of the community. A federally qualified health center provides access to primary care or doctor's office visits on a sliding fee scale according to income. So essentially, that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars will allow the Gates Medical Center, along with the community care clinic that's currently in Tiner, the adolescent care center at the Gates County High School, and also services for migrant and seasonal farm workers because you're probably aware that as an agricultural region, we have many migrant seasonal farm workers in our area. Um, that will, um, allow people to access primary care and provide new services. Now, the first, uh, funding is for two years, so we'll get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two years. If we meet all the federal requirements and dot all of our Is and cross all of our Ts, that funding should be ongoing into the future for long term. Um, so that's a real asset to Gates County. We've partnered with Chauan and Proquemans County to serve, um, the number of people that we needed to do in the, in order to receive the maximum grant award. So, um, just as with the housing grant, we have a hundred and twenty days to meet all of the rules and getting started. We're in the process right now of working towards that. Um, we'll begin recruiting physicians, uh, to increase access and also other health professionals and, and also doing, um, marketing to the community to get the word out. And I'd like you to be my partners in getting the word out. If you, um, have constituents who need health care, we have this very valuable service in our region now.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We're really excited about that.
Um, I'm very excited too. I'm trying not to jump up and down, but we are very, very excited. A really unique thing about federally qualified health centers is that we have a board of directors that, um, is the majority of whom are patients. So when your board of directors are your patients that you're serving, it really helps you to focus on the needs of the community. Uh, so we have representatives from Gates County, Chauan County, and Proquemans County as well on our board of directors.
Now, you talk about bringing in, uh, added, uh, physicians, doctors, and so forth. Are they gonna be here, like, on a resident basis permanent? Or they're gonna, like, come in certain days, or how is that gonna work? Like, we have one doctor here now.
Right.
Okay, so what is the additional, uh, medical staff? What is that gonna look like as far as coming in on a daily basis? Or will it be, uh, three days a week from pit? Or just, just give us some of the idea of what that's gonna be?
Uh, that's a, the, a very good question, and it's a process. We currently have Dr. Rayett Pollard and also Tamale Tyson, who's a family nurse practitioner at the Gates County Medical Center. We are re- will be recruiting a physician who will first primarily practice at the Tiner Community Care Clinic because currently we have a nurse practitioner there, but we don't have a physician. The physicians that come in, in the first couple of years, will not be here five days a week. I anticipate that they'll come in two or three days a week. One of the services that we don't have currently, um, in Gates County is prenatal care or care for, you know, for women who are pregnant. And that's something we'd like to get started, uh, within the next six months, is bringing in an OB-GYN who could provide prenatal care up to maybe the thirty-second week because then, uh, women will still need to leave the community to deliver their babies at the closest hospital to their residence. So, um, in the first couple of years, we'll be bringing physicians in. I don't anticipate another full-time equivalent or one resident physician here in the next couple of years. Beyond that, I do anticipate bringing in additional full-time equivalent in.
Would, um, I don't know if you were here earlier, but we've got a, um, Family Fun Fitness Day gonna be taking place. Ms. Laster spoke about it. Would that be a good time to have a, for them to have a booth with some information there?
It would be an excellent time.
To get the word out?
And I, I serve with Esther on the Gates Partners for Health. So absolutely, and that's a very well-attended public event, so we will be there.
Good.
Anything else, Joe? We thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll keep you posted.
Good job, Nancy.
All right, next on our agenda, uh, new business, Toby Chapel with, uh, a couple item, more items in new business.
The first item is, it's that time of year where we need to address our 2012 holiday schedule. Have in front of you what I believe mirrors the state's schedule for holidays for 2012. Or any questions?
What day is January? The second?
Monday.
So Monday?
Yeah. The first is on Sunday that year. The only reason I know that, John, is the second is the, uh, last day of hunting season.
I mean, the only problem again is the tax office. I mean, if we, um, when are the taxes due? Without penalty?
The fifth, I believe.
I believe.
The sixth?
Fifth.
Fifth. If, but if, but if the first was on, on a Monday, it would still be the same thing. It would still be off.
It'd be closed on Monday.
Still one day.
Well, what I'm saying is, that basically is. Most people just have to get down December if they wanna pay their taxes and have it on the tax returns on the previous year, on which place they decide to do it at.
Any other questions?
Do you need, is this a?
Yes, I need you to adopt this as your holiday schedule.
All right.
Well, twenty, that's his 2012.
Correct. It's, it's 2012 schedule.
It's the next one.
And December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth falls on a weekday, apparently so.
Yeah, they're all weekdays.
Any other questions?
All right, we need a motion to accept, to adopt this as our holiday schedule for the county for this, for year 2012.
One other question. This is, this is what we normally budget, right? This is what we budget.
Oh, yeah. There's, there are new, there are no new holidays in there.
Thirteen paid holidays.
Mm-hmm. That's what it adds up to.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, adopt the holiday schedule for 2012.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right.
Next issue is waiving of permit fees. This was something that was adopted a year or two, or maybe even more than that ago. And the intent of the policy was that if we have a large-scale issue or disaster, that the citizens have the ability to acquire any needed permit fee, permits without the fees being assessed. Uh, one of the things that Irene showed us was that there was a, there was a discrepancy in the way the wording is written versus the reality of how things actually work. And the original wording did, relies on the state or the federal government to declare a disaster area before the fees can be waived, which is a multiple-day, multiple-week process, where in reality, I think it should be based upon the, based off the state of emergency that can be declared by the county, which is much faster and much more realistic and reflects the timeline in which we'll be operating under.
Do you, you wanna make a change?
Yes, I would like, and, uh, the change would be on the second line of the current policy where it says county state of emergency. That should replace the second line where it says state or federally declared disaster. All else should remain the exact same. The only difference is the triggering event, when we can control and when we can't.
So we're saying the result of a county declared emergency, right?
Yeah, you would just take, just take that sentence out and insert the words county state of emergency.
County, uh, declared state of emergency.
Due to a natural disaster, yes.
So what is, what is the title of 150A, 153A, 357? What's the title?
What is the title?
What's the title of the general statute?
I have no idea. What is the title of the general statute?
This is, inspections will be done for regular construction and cord. That has, that has to do with the.
And what I, and this, and this is the reason I ask this. When a repair or construction is required to be issued a permit. So to me, this is, is a national disaster. If my house is damaged and I need to replace it, that's one thing. But let's say I was in the process of getting ready to build a new house, and it's Friday afternoon, and I wanna go get my permit, but there's a hurricane coming Monday. Should I wait the next Friday and see if there's any damage and we declared a national disaster and I go get my permit then? So I don't have to pay anything? Is that what we're?
I, I would say that's such an unrealistic possibility that it's tru-.
No, that's very realistic.
If you'd let me finish. It trumps, it's so unrealistic that it trumps. It's trumped by the, the intent of the policy, which is to ensure that people aren't getting an undue financial burden placed on the citizens when they have damage that has nothing to do, that's not optional on their part.
And that's, and that's exactly what you need to have in this thing. When a repair or construction due to damage become a national disaster.
That's what it says. What it says.
What does it say down there?
It says, "As a result of a county state of emergency due to a natural disaster."
When a repair or construction damage is required. That's what I'm saying there. You need, you need to signify whether it's a result of a national disaster.
It, it says that, "When a repair or construction is required to be issued a permit according to the general statute as a." as a result of a county state of emergency due to a natural disaster."
As a result of a state or federal declared disaster.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I, I'm not sure if you're grasping what I'm saying, but the words clearly say, "Due to a natural disaster."
Not in the first sentence it does.
Right.
Okay.
Natural disasters, the fi- it don't, this one-
It says it right here.
I think, I think it-
I don't, I don't.
I think it's, it's about words.
Mine does. That's what I'm trying to tell you, all the new words you should say.
If you change, if you move the-
Let me see that one.
This is what he would like to see it done, I think, before we remove.
If you remove the two B, it says, "When a repair or construction is, is requires-"
See, we're looking at that.
We don't have copies.
A permit to be issued in accordance with, I think if you put that two B, uh, remove that and make that requires, then, then it would, uh, it would flow like he said.
I think if you read what he's got there, we can have a copy. That, that's what everybody would, we're, let everybody read that, and then we'll know where we're at. The one we're reading is the old one that's existing right now. We want to change it to that one.
That's all I'm saying, is I just wanna make it short. It is very clear that-
Caused by the natural disaster.
That's exactly right.
That's what he was saying, I think.
That's why he uses those words.
This one I got doesn't say that.
Yeah, this is existing on now.
Any other questions about the policy?
Everybody alright with that?
I'm fine, bud.
Alright, let's make a motion that we accept the change in the policy.
I'll make a motion that we accept the change in policy of waiving of permit fees due to national disaster.
Second.
A motion and a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
That's all I have.
Alright, okay, let's take it together. The next thing on our agenda, um, I've got a request, uh, that Ms. Fanny Langston be, um, pers- uh, requested to serve another term in the Gates County Jury Commission. Uh, we need a reappointment of her.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Mrs. Fanny Langston, uh, to serve another term on the Gates County Jury Commission.
Alright, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Um, I'd like to ask the county manager.
Okay, fine.
Is, is this a scenario, I think this might be our first example, um, is this an example of when we need our paperwork, our new application form?
I would, I would think so at, at some point, but I'm not sure.
To stay within, I mean, we set that up to-
I would say yes.
Okay. Can we, you'll follow through on that then? Getting her, her to have a-
I thought the pur- purpose of the paperwork was to be pre-appointment. Wasn't that-
Not, not for re- not for reappointments?
I think so. Well, no, no, I thi- I think it probably should've been used, is my point.
Okay.
But I think maybe you've missed the opportunities.
Right.
Yeah, I think we have, Ben's the votes been taken.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to see something on file, though.
Okay.
I'd like to see-
I'll have her fill it out. It'll just be post. Does it, Ken?
Good, fine.
Alright, uh, next on our agenda will be commissioner comments. Uh, Henry, would you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm just gonna say today that I'm, I'm very, uh, ecstatic about having received the, uh, one hundred thousand dollar capacity grant, uh, for the Housing Committee to help the citizens of the county. Uh, I'm very impressed today with the, uh, participation and the presence of the citizens, and, and, uh, I think we're moving forward, and we're trying to do a great job for the county.
Jack?
Um, I was alarmed to hear from, uh, Mr. Bright that we were second in the nation, um, of areas that needed, uh, food. That, that was alarming. Um, last year, I attended a meeting at Jim's. I think there were about six or seven people there, and, uh, they relayed to the people who attended that what the, what their needs were. And, um, they do a lot with a little, so I just wanna commend them for doing that. And, uh, they did, they gave me a list of needs that they had, um, not just, uh, they had financial needs so they can help more people, but they had a couple of fiscal needs. I made a note of that while I was there that day. I want Jim's to know I have not forgotten that. And, uh, and I'll be sharing that with the commissioners, uh, in the near future, see what their opinion is on meeting some of those needs.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Johnny?
Appreciate all of those that come in today, and the ones especially of you that have stayed for the full course. It is getting long. It is close to two. I appreciate all the calls and concerns of people that have been calling me over the past several weeks about the library. Uh, the night meeting, I do plan to make a presentation. Uh, it will be informative to you. Regardless of what your opinion is, what I wanna do is see that all five of us behind this thing on board with the same thing. And the only thing that's been made is there is a commitment from us that we do want to do something about our library. It's all about the discussion on what is entitled in doing that, what is the right way, what specifically is our needs, not what our wants are. I'd like to have a yacht. Not gonna get one. Do I deserve one? Yeah, I deserve a yacht. If I want one, I deserve one, but it's not practical. So, that's the kind of things that we had to do, and you, I mean, these kind of commitments really take a dedication to doing the right thing and trying to, it's not about we, it's about us, all of us. We're all in it together. And it's a team, and it takes a commitment. It takes dedication and passion. And I appreciate all of those people that want an eighty-one hundred square foot library. God, I'd like to have that too. I'd like to see a twelve thousand feet, uh, or foot, or seat stadium out here in Gates County, so we can have a minor league baseball team come here. God, I'd love to see that. But it's not gonna happen. It's not practical. So, you had to evaluate everything before you make a decision. And that's all I'm asking. We didn't do that up front. We had an opportunity. We ignored it. We marched forward and spent, or committed to seventy-seven thousand dollars. I think that was a bad thing, personally, without doing your homework, working your analysis up front. Private business don't do that. It's sort of like what Earl said, talking about riding down and saying, "Hey, I'd love to have this." You don't do those kind of things. I bet you don't do it either when you walk up to town and you go shopping, and you pick something up, especially the women, and look at it. A lot of times, they, they put it back on the table. Why? They make a conscious decision on what their needs are versus their wants. That's why. But anyhow, I do appreciate your time and the, those people that have been calling, and I appreciate, uh, you taking the, your time out of a busy time and during the day to come see us and talk and hear what's going on. And Cal, I'd like to say I appreciate you for putting the news in the paper, and, uh, I thought it was very good, and I do appreciate that. And I appreciate you giving me a call, and, uh, it was pretty right down to the line. Thank you. Thank you.
Kenny?
Uh, certainly like to thank everybody that came and everybody that stayed to the end. I felt like we needed a library. I felt like we needed to move forward with our library. And I hope that we can get our library and, and get what we want, and I think we can. We're gonna move forward, whether I'm sitting up here or somebody is. People talk a lot of times about past commissioners, and they're probably gonna talk about me and probably the rest of us after we go, while we're here. I'm, I've tried not to talk about past commissioners for the simple reason I didn't know all the facts that they dealt with at the time that they made their decisions. And I know sometimes we don't, uh, show all the facts to the general public. And, you know, sometimes we're not allowed to show some of the facts. But we hope that we're making right decisions for the county to move forward and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I'd like to welcome everybody here to come back again next we- next week and for the night meeting. The more we have, the more input we get. Uh, Ms. Pat, it's good to see you back there. Um, so, everybody, I'm glad you're here. You're a little late, my, I was looking for you earlier, but we welcome you here anyway. Uh, everybody will, uh, have a good day, and we're gonna have to go into closed session, uh, as, as authorized by General Statute's one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A three. I need a motion to, to do that.
So, move?
Second.
A motion and a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Y'all have a nice day. I need a motion to, uh, go out of closed session.
So, move?
Second.
A motion and a second to go out of closed session. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Alright, a closed session. So, we need a motion to act on the, uh, the instructions given to our attorney during closed session.
As outlined.
As outlined in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Alright, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to, uh, uh, direct our attorney to act as we direct him during closed session. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Alright, any other motions? Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn?
I've got a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.